I'm going to go ahead and call to order this Monday, April 14th, 2025, meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Supervisors. Our first order of business this evening is to go into closed meeting. And we will start that with be it resolved. The Montgomery County Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia hereby enters into closed meeting for the purpose of discussing the following. Section 2.2-3711. One, discussion, consideration or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining or resignation of specific officers, appointees, or employees of any public body. One, public service authority. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Ms. Bowen.
Aye.
Mr. Kits.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Ms. Ficciakowski.
Aye.
Ms. Biggs.
Aye.
Mr. Grafsky.
Aye.
Chair de Mots.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
We are in closed meeting and we will resume at 7:15 or thereafter.[944.52]
Let us pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Angie. We're going to start our meeting this evening. We have two presentations. Our first presentation is from the Virginia Department of Transportation. And Mr. David Clark is here to provide us with updates. Welcome, sir.
Basically, for our update this month, it's another month of cleaning, still cleaning up from storm, trying to get as much debris up as we can, continuing that and patching mostly in front of a paving schedule. It's already started. If you're out in the Catawba area, you will have seen that. We've done quite a bit of Catawba Road, Route 785. And we're going to keep on going with a lot of paving out down in the area. Some of the bigger, longer sections, we're doing about a mile and a half of Tyler Road. We'll be in the Charlottesville area on Old Town Road. Blue Springs Road, we'll also be doing about a mile of Mount Tabor. That's with like a plant mix asphalt overlay. Surface treatment schedule is also fairly robust. We've got about three and a half miles of yellow sulfur road, about three miles of Fairview Church, some of Craig Mountain, and then a slurry hill, smaller slurry hill schedule, something in the subdivision. So we're still patching out in front of some of those overlays that are coming up. You know, other winter breakup patching obviously still going on and the debris removal, some pipe replacement, and just kind of general maintenance. For construction, we haven't started any construction projects yet. We will be having a public hearing next month here at the board for the six-year plan, secondary construction. And we are currently working, so one of our plan reviewers today working on, with the county, on getting Brush Mountain Estates up to speed and into the system. And that's all I have right now. One other thing, we are also working with Blacksburg Police for a concert taking place in early May.
Small show.
Yeah, small show where it's going to hopefully not mess up 460 traffic much. We can get them on campus and off pretty quickly. But we're attending all the meetings in prep for that big event.
Are you attending the concert?
I will not be attending, I will not be anywhere near. I'll probably be sitting on my couch with my phone, you know, talking to a lot of people about stuff.
Well, thanks.
I think I do know somewhere we're going, though.
Thanks for the update. I'm going to go around the table here and see if we've got some specific road questions for you. And we'll start with Supervisor Gravsky.
Hey, thanks for being here, Mr. Clark, and thank you for your quick response to my email the other day. So in terms of, like, what's the kind of usual turnaround time for addressing potholes and things like that?
Yeah, it depends. We try to at least take a look at them to see, you know, if it's something that's a severe safety issue. We prioritize our resources on staying in front of the overlay schedule. We've got to get everything patched up before the contractor comes through because we are on contract to them. And then it's a balancing act between that and other work that's going on, cleaning up debris as much as possible, and then doing the patching. And, you know, it's a lot like many of the things we do, like mowing in snow, you know, it needs it everywhere at the exact same time. So it's running around chasing things. So it just depends on the issue itself.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Biggs?
Yes, I think I sent you an email, hopefully thanking you for collecting debris up in Brush Mountain.
Yes.
They were very thankful, so thank you again.
I passed that along, it was good.
Supervisor King?
All right, give us your big list.
The speed limit sign on Childers.
They're studying that, and the one on Dry Valley, too. The Dry Valley one, there was not a speed limit already there. We talked about maybe there was one before and it had gotten moved or knocked down or something. They couldn't find a record of that being studied, so they're going to have to do a study on Dry Valley.
All right, what about that one on Childers?
Same issue. They're going to have to, it's a study to change a section.
Yeah, and they go Richmond, help them study?
No, it's just, yeah, they've got 12 counties and sometimes, you know, it just takes a while to get those done.
Okay. And on Camp Carey Brook, soon as you get off Route 8, right down there, there's some big potholes.
Okay.
And Chestnut Ridge Road, they do have a work order number, but nobody's been out there to fix them potholes yet.
It's potholes on Chestnut Ridge?
Yeah, they already got a work order number.
We have to, you know, those get sent right to the area headquarters and they are required to address those either by fixing the work or calling the person and telling them when the work can be done.
Okay, aye, thank you.
Supervisor Kits?
So, got my couple lists of, but the one on the blinking sign, blinking light coming up Radford Road, I told you I'm going to stay on that hill, I'm just, that one's going to stay.
Yep, I checked on that, they are, it isn't, they are designing that. But I asked specifically, I said, I'm going to the meeting, they're going to want to know.
It's consistency, it's all about consistency. I'm going to bring up something that's a little bit out of my district, somebody hit me up about it, but Bobcat Lane. What's the, and I hate to ask you stuff off the top of your head, but if you don't know, could you at least bring it up for the next time? So, I can get with them, but, yeah.
I spoke to a gentleman on Bobcat Lane, told him to come to the public hearing, but the road is on the six-year plan. Right now, it's after, I think, I don't know, I can't remember if it's after Paul School Road or not. I know it's after Taylor Hollow is next, and then I think there's a road in the Charlottesville area next after that, and then I think it's either Bobcat, I think it's at Bobcat and then Paul School.
Okay, all right, thank you, that's all I have.
Supervisor Ben?
Love the paving on Catawba Road. When does striping happen after the paving? Like, I know they've got the little plastic things or whatever in the middle that shows that they're going to double stripe it.
Yeah, the striping is a part of the same contract, but unfortunately, sometimes that lags longer than we'd like, so I don't know when they're going to get to any of the striping. And there's still some shoulder stone we have to put down, too. So there's still some work out there.
And then some patching, where the county and town line is on Nellie's Cave Road at the top, the town side is fine, but right at that line, there's now potholes on the county side. And then at the very bottom, lowest end, where you guys patched a year or two ago, this big, kind of a big pothole, I would have thought that it would have lasted a long time, but now potholes are growing outside of it, so I'm thinking that piece needs to be done extra large.
Is that on Nellie's Cave or on Woodland?
It is. It's like the dip between Woodland Hills and the first little hump.
Okay.
So, that's it, thank you.
Vice Chair Fidjikowski?
Has there been anything done, any follow-up from the trip where you and I and Chris went out to Route 603? Do you know if anything's been done on that yet?
We've, they've looked at some of those signs, they're trying to make a decision on which ones go back, and we haven't done any of that shoulder work yet. And we can put up the no parking, I don't know if we came to a decision on where to put, at least maybe on that inside of that curve, but as we talked about, you put it on the other side and it pushes them, you know, over to another area. And then now I've recently heard something about them parking along the North Fork Park that's over near the new one, on the opposite side of the road, like on the Shell side. There's a person who's got a driveway there that is kind of blocking, so we may have to look at some no parking over on that side, too, which we almost have to anticipate where they're going to try next after we start putting up no parking signs.
So, maybe better just wait for the meteor shower to drop some big rocks like at the rest area? Okay, well, yeah, I know we had talked about the parking signs, but I don't know if you would put them up before you fix the shoulder because it seems like that would be a waste of time.
Yeah, the shoulders may be the only thing that's keeping them from parking right there.
Okay, all right. Yeah, we've got some serious potholes popping up on Allegheny Springs. There's one that is, it's pretty deep, it's on the right shoulder, it's on the paved portion, obviously, but it's, let me give you a reference point. It's, if you're going southbound on Allegheny Springs Road, it's after you pass the bluffs, the rock ledges there.
Right.
It'll be right there on the right, on that southbound lane. There's also some delamination that's getting really bad when you're coming out of the S-curves right before you get to the trailer park. That's also in the southbound lane. It's getting hard to avoid it, and you know when people start trying to avoid it, they're going into the opposite lane, which creates even more problems, but if somebody could look at that. The speed study, you got that right, the request for the S-curves between, now I've got to think of names, Yates Road and, come on, brain. I'm trying to think of it, it's, Flick Drive?
Yes, yes.
You got that one?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's, actually, I'm really surprised I haven't had more citizen complaints about that section of road because it is, it is dangerous, and I know there's 35 mile an hour warning signs that are up, but it may be time to lower the speed limit through that area. There's children living in some of those houses that are in that curve, so that would be a good one to look at. And one other thing, a couple years ago, we had talked about looking at the drainage right there on 460 where it meets Eastern Montgomery Lane. You know, that has come back in the news here lately, a lot of people talking about it. And as I recall, after a heavy rain, water would set there, it doesn't drain. And you had said something about maybe finding a diagram of that.
Yeah, I remember going out there and standing there and looking at it. I might need to meet you out there and make sure I'm looking at the right spot, because I guess if you don't go out there right after a big rain, then you wouldn't necessarily see it.
Yeah, that's true. Yeah, if you're available this week, I can email you.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, that sounds good, thank you very much.
And I know I don't normally have anything for you just because of the boundary of my district, but I do have two things, and they're in other people's districts. I was at a meeting recently and a note was passed to me, and the note says, "State Route 696, Wake Forest Road, needs paving, looks like a quilt, one mile long." Could you take a look at that and provide me with some follow-up? And then, and are you ready?
Yeah, I was making sure it wasn't already on the list, that's what, but it's not right now.
Yeah, if you could take a look at that. And then, I think Angie probably forwarded you an email that I sent her. I spoke with a citizen late on Friday after business hours, specifically about Pilot Road near the consolidated site, and after the storms, they came through and cut the brush, but it stacked up in the road and kind of coming into the roadway. And so if two cars are passing, the lady that I spoke with actually said it's too narrow for two cars, and it did some damage to the side of her vehicle. And then she also had her, her driveway was washed out in recent storms, so Angie, I think forwarded you the email that has the two reference numbers.
It may have been Vicky, one of us.
I'll check, yeah, I remember seeing something from Angie, actually.
This morning.
Yeah, if you could just, when you get a chance, follow up with me on that.
Okay, yep.
Did that spur any questions from anybody else? Go right ahead.
Are we getting reimbursed or any extra compensation from Mountain Vale Pipeline because of Catawba Road needing resurfacing, probably due to all their truck traffic and stuff like that?
Not on Catawba, I know they've done some, not necessarily reimbursement, but just had them do some of the, some patching work. A lot of that is taken, taken care of through another office that, you know, it's been handled again since it's through several counties and the whole district. I'll ask and see if, what kind of, you know.
I would think that both Mount Tabor and Catawba should get some compensation. Thanks.
Okay, and I think that's probably enough for this evening. Thank you so much for being here, and we will see you again soon.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next presentation this evening is Mr. Billy Hanks. Mr. Hanks is the Chief of Christiansburg Fire and Rescue, and he is the Chair of the Fire and Rescue CIP Committee. So he is making a presentation on the Fire and Rescue CIP Committee's recommendations for fiscal year '26. We, as a board, will not be taking any action on these recommendations this evening, but this gives us an opportunity to review the recommendations and ask any questions.
That's not it, Jen, it's the one above that on the desktop.
There we go.
Yep.
Welcome, Chief, we're happy you're here with us this evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair, it's a pleasure to be here. Members of the Board of Supervisors, thank you for having me. Ms. Hill? I'm here tonight to give you some insight on our capital improvements plan for fire and EMS throughout the county. This committee's put together of all the fire and EMS chiefs throughout Montgomery County in the two towns, the town of Blacksburg and the town of Christiansburg. Our capital improvements plans on the replacement cycles, and let me make sure, right here's sort of what our replacement cycles are, replace, our moving equipment with fire and EMS throughout the county. thank you for having me. Ms. Hill, um, I'm here tonight to uh, give you some insight on our capital improvements plan for fire and EMS throughout the county. Uh, this uh, committee's put together of all the fire and EMS chiefs throughout Montgomery County in the two towns, the town of Blacksburg and the town of Christiansburg. Uh, our capital improvements plans uh, on the replacement cycle, and let me make sure, right here's sort of what our replacement cycles are to replace our, our moving equipment with fire and EMS throughout the county. Uh, as you can see, ambulances are on a 10-year replacement or 100,000 mile uh, cycle brush trucks uh, or pickup trucks with brush skid units in the back are on a 15-year replacement. And uh, we've got the estimated cost on those uh, there for, for just a guy. That's a guy. That's not what they actually cost. That's what they could cost up to that amount. Sometimes it could cost more than that. Uh, mini pumppers are 15-year replacement. They could go up as high as $500,000. And now engines, tankers, and pumppers, uh, which is what we use to fight fire with throughout the county, uh, they're on a 20-year replacement cycle. And uh, needless to say, you know, throughout the last five years, they have increased in price dramatically. So we're looking at about a million five every time we go to replace one of these uh, pieces of equipment, one of these engines or pumper or tanker. And that does not include the price of the equipment that goes on the truck. That is the truck only. And uh, most departments, when we outfit trucks, we try to put new SCBA's on them, and we try to put uh, new hose on them, new fire equipment and nozzles because we're replacing 20-year-old equipment. Uh, sometimes we can't do that for one five. But that's what we have plugged in, into our budget cycle, just to be able to see. Response vehicles, those are the chief's vehicles or the, the duty officer on-call vehicles or our EMS responder vehicles that we send out on calls. They're on a seven-year replacement, and we've got an $80,000 figure tacked on those. That's a really close figure nowadays. Uh, you know, we used to, we still buy vehicles off state contract. Uh, the state contracts have increased in price like everything else that we do. It just keeps going up in price. Uh, but once you buy a Tahoe or a Suburban or a pickup truck and you outfit it with, with red lights, sirens, and so forth, you're looking at right around $80,000 to do that. Crash rescue trucks are our big trucks that we haul all the equipment on. We do vehicle extrication and uh, scene stabilization on anything that we do. They're on a 20-year replacement cycle also, and they're about a million two right now. Uh, was at a conference this past week, uh, talked to several truck manufacturers, and prices are just gonna keep going up. Um, so on the next slide we'll show you, uh, these are our recommendations for the upcoming year. Uh, the committee sat down, we looked at all the needs uh, throughout all the departments within the county. Uh, we sort of looked at them as the age of the vehicle, how many miles are on the vehicle. Uh, the committee recommends that we replace the Elliston Fire Department Engine 23, which is a 2009. Uh, but this truck has been deemed unsafe by the manufacturer, deemed, deemed unsafe by uh, I think the county attorney, uh, deemed this truck unsafe and that we needed to get it off the street because it's got a steering issue that no one can guarantee us that, that it will be fixed once we put the money into it to fix it. Uh, Elliston had another truck that was due for replacement prior to this truck. Uh, the committee discussed the, the needs of what needed to be replaced right now. We bumped the other truck that was due to be replaced back, and we, we moved this engine 23 forward because it's, it's a much more critical need within the county uh, right now than the other truck that was to be replaced. So we got earmarked uh, through our budget process, we've got earmarked 1.5 million to be able to replace that vehicle. If you look at the next four vehicles, they're all response vehicles. Uh, Long Shop McCoy Fire Department's uh, looking to replace a 13-year-old vehicle. And if you remember, remember from the previous slide, we're, we're looking at seven years on those. This is a 13-year-old vehicle. Uh, Riner Fire Department's looking to replace a 17-year-old vehicle. Uh, Christiansburg EMS is looking to replace a 25-year-old vehicle. And Christiansburg Fire Department's looking to replace a 15-year-old vehicle. Uh, all these vehicles have been pushed back in previous budgets because we had a greater need. Uh, the committee works really well together uh, to establish what the critical needs are within the county and what trucks we really need to look at to be able to replace them uh, to be, be the most cost-effective for what we're dealing with at that time. Uh, our total current allocation that we receive from, from the board uh, is about uh, 1,827 or 20,000 a year. Uh, or our total this year is a, is 1,820,000 of 1,867,290 is our allocation uh, in current dollars. Uh, that does not include future money that, that could be there if, if uh, you know, if there is a increase in any, any, any funding. That's gonna leave us with a balance of about 47,290. We try to keep a little bit of reserve in our capital replacement program uh, for stuff we might miss. When we go to spec this engine, and we start to build an engine, and there's something we might have missed on that engine, we need a little bit of cushion because every time you do a change order, it's about $300 per change order. And that doesn't include the price of whatever you're trying to fix. So we try to keep a little bit of cushion there in case we run into that problem. Uh, all the departments do a very good job uh, when they get a spec out of truck. We don't usually have any problems, but we always like to have a cushion uh, in case we fall back, or in case we need to fall back. Um, right now, I just wanted to share with you a little bit of, little bit of problems that, you know, fire and EMS has gone through as far as being able to obtain these vehicles. Uh, and ever since COVID, uh, it's pushed the, pushed the manufacturing schedules way back, uh, pushed the delivery of parts to build these trucks way back. Uh, we used to get an ambulance in about 12 months. Now we're looking at three to four years to purchase an ambulance once we submit the order. Uh, brush trucks we can have now in about a year to two years. We used to get those in about six to nine months. Um, mini pumppers uh, and engines were uh, the conference I was at this weekend, they told us that, that it could go as high as 42 to 48 months now for delivery. So if we order a truck July 1, it could be up to 42 or 48 months before we receive that truck. Uh, so that puts us in a bind, and we, we have to do a lot of, I think the committee as a whole does a lot of strategic planning. Once we've uh, come across this, this plan, you know, to be able to get the trucks that we need the most, that are, they're in dire need to do that. But uh, used to get these trucks in about a year to 18 months. Now it's anywhere from 42 to 48 months long. But just wanted to share that with you, and uh, uh, this is the recommendation of the committee. The committee works very well together, and, and I'm be glad to answer any questions if anybody has questions.
Chief Hanks, do you think you could go back to the slide that has the list of recommendations just for reference?
Oops.
That one right there.
Yes.
Um, and I'm going to go around, see who has questions. I'm gonna start with Supervisor Kits, because he's the board's liaison to the Fire and Rescue Commission.
Um, I don't have any questions.
Oh, wait, hold on. Angie wanted to say something first. Sorry to interrupt you.
I just, I wanted to bring one item to the attention of the board and the other folks that are watching. As we've implemented career staff in the county, we have career EMS in the Eastern Montgomery area. There is no volunteer EMS in that area. In Riner, we have career and volunteer EMS. They operate out of different buildings, and they have different equipment. And in, at the Elliston Fire Department, we have career and volunteer firefighters that work very well together. And I just wanted to be transparent and point out that this truck would be used by both career and volunteers. Is that my understanding correct?
That, that's, that was the way we set it up. You know, this truck, this truck is an Elliston truck. It's gonna be by, used by both the career staff and the volunteer staff. And, and that's the way that we discussed it when we discussed replacing this truck.
Thanks.
It would be used by both.
Now Supervisor Kits, you're good to go.
So, no, I, I've been sitting in meetings and been listening to them, and they've got a very, very good handle on how they do the trucks, how everything's going forward. And I've been working with them for a little over a year now, and I've had a chance to travel around to each and every department. And uh, mine is Christiansburg, but I talk to Chief Hanks a lot. So um, I'm comfortable with where they're at and how they do their priorities because, because the, the county really, we don't have any say in that. We just, we have, work with them and make sure that they're taken care of, and make sure the volunteers are taken care of along with our career staff. So I'm, I'm very comfortable with how they came to this plan, and um, that's all I have, so.
Okay. Supervisor King, as a volunteer fireman yourself, would you like to?
Well, I'm glad they work good together down there. I just, I think we need to set up some kind of system where the paid side and the volunteer side has different equipment money. Because we're just putting in, what is it, 1.8 million dollars for nine agencies. It's 10 if we count the paid side. And you've seen how long it takes to get these vehicles.
If that's the will of the board, we can certainly look at that. I will be glad to um, get some information together. Until this point, since the um, other agencies, the career agencies have worked independently from volunteers, they have come out of different allocations of money, not out of the, this, uh, I think it's a penny and a half of the tax rate that's set aside for the equipment replacement.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Go ahead Supervisor Ben.
I have two. Um, could you go back to where the replacement years and or miles, that slide? That one?
Yep.
Um, so I think you said that there's a critical one that really needs to be replaced right now?
Yeah, the Engine 23 is a 2009. It would not normally be scheduled for replacement until 29, 2029. But that's a critical need piece of equipment because we have to take it completely out of service. It's not drivable. It's not safe to drive. Uh, we've had it to, the county's had it several garages, uh, back to the manufacturer's garage. They say we can fix it, but I believe the discussion was that they weren't gonna be able to guarantee that was gonna fix it. And it's a steering issue. So the last thing we want to do is take the truck down and not be able to steer it. Uh, so under the advice of the county attorney, where they've pulled that truck out of service, we feel like that's a critical need truck to replace it. And as I mentioned before, Elliston had a truck that was due to be replaced this year. That truck can survive another three or four years, and let's replace this truck that we, that we need to fight fire with.
So what do we do in the meantime? Because there is such a long lead time to replace that truck.
We've got, maybe Michael can speak to that. Uh, they've got a spare truck that we took out of service, and I believe you replaced the truck in Long Shop? Yeah, they replaced the truck in Long Shop. Uh, they, we had not sold that truck yet through the county, and they have put, since put that count, that truck back in service to fill that need until the new truck comes in.
Awesome. And then my second question just has to do with sorting category. What does that mean on that slide?
Um, the sorting category, that's, that's how we classify, class, it's just for our references, you know, ambulance, we got them as a category A, uh, Bs are brush trucks, C mini pumppers.
Okay, thank you.
It's just, just for our knowledge.
Okay.
Okay. Down here, do we have any questions? Go ahead Supervisor Biggs.
I don't have a question. I just wanna thank um, the task force for all the work they did. But may we get a copy of this so we can have a copy?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
We have a copy. We can share that with you.
Supervisor Krasinski?
No, Mike, my question was gonna be about that tanker and exactly what that discussion was, you know, how, how are we gonna bridge that gap if this thing's taken out of service?
Right, right. Yeah, we were, I think, I think the county was fortunate that we had not sold that piece of equipment yet. And uh, we were, I think uh, Michael can speak to it better than I can on it, but I think we were able to, to take that piece of equipment and do some work to it and get it back up to where it needed to be to, to get us over the bridge right there to, to take care of that.
Yeah, I kinda, as Chief Hanks said, we were fortunate that Long Shop McCoy had an engine that got replaced about two years ago. When that truck came um, back to us for surplus, we were able to put it down there and fill that gap with all of the equipment that we were able to take off the truck that's currently out of service. So it ended up working out well.
Great. That's all. Thank you.
Okay. Vice Chair Fidzikowski?
I'm kinda curious as to um, it, does the replacement cycle kinda jibe with what insurance underwriters look at as far as affecting homeowners?
I think it, I think it's close. I think it's as close as we can get. You know, we've, for the past 15 years, we've been paying, playing catch-up on vehicle replacement. And, and we've worked really hard, and we put this committee together to, to determine the needs and who, who needed trucks replaced and so forth. And, and with the extra funding that this board has given us over the past, you know, 10 years, uh, we've been able to catch up. Uh, you know, now with the increase of the pricing on the vehicles, you know, we're, we're gonna be, we're gonna be maintaining. We won't be gaining any more ground because of the cost of the trucks have gone up so much. Uh, but I think we're really close on the insurance.
Do they give, do they give you all any guidelines from the ins, insurance industry?
They really don't, Steve. I mean, there's uh, there, there's, you know, there's departments in other counties that are driving 40-year-old stuff and barely getting by. Uh, a neighboring county here uh, close to us has stuff that is antique, and, and I don't know how they survive with the stuff. I really don't. But, you know, we have, uh, the county's been gracious to that county over, over the past few years, you know, and we've donated trucks to them or that we've sold them trucks at a low cost to keep them going, and it's better than what they had. So uh, we're very blessed. We're very appreciative for what the county does for us. We're very appreciative for the funding we get um, to be able to have the equipment and the stock that we have. And I think, you know, we've, you guys have allowed us to have the best that we can get.
Well, I, I certainly do appreciate the committee's uh, work on that and how they work together to take care of the urgent needs first and are able to set some things
Committee works very well together, very well together. We've got a good group, and everybody works together for, for, you know, the common cause. I think we're doing pretty well.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Chief Hanks. I don't have any questions. Really good to see you.
Good to see you, too.
Um, I understand you've got somewhere to be after this, so thank you for taking your time this evening.
I will be.
Um, and we look forward to seeing you again soon.
And I will be at the concert, so.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. Um, tonight we have three public hearings on the schedule. Our first public hearing this evening is a special use permit for a short-term tourist rental. This is a request by J. William Colbert, the Second Declaration Trust, and Joanne Bandy Colbert Declaration Trust for a special use permit to allow a short, short-term tourist rental with an existing single-family dwelling and attached accessory dwelling on property located at 1480 and 1482 Clay Street. That was a mouthful.
It was a mouthful.
We have Bree Hopkins here for the presentation.
Thank you. Um, so this property is located just outside the town of Blacksburg, um, at the end, towards the end of Clay Street. Um, this is the Orchard subdivision, if you're familiar with that. This is an aerial view of the property. You can see the existing structure on site. Um, this is Clay Street. And then, as you can see here at the map on the right, you can see where it turns to private right here. Um, this is the Orchard subdivision. It's zoned residential R2. And then um, this property is zoned, I, I believe that is all in the town of Blacksburg, actually. Um, so this site lies right here. So this request is to allow a short-term tourist rental, which you guys are getting pretty familiar with because you've had several lately. Um, this is within an existing three-bedroom primary single-family dwelling, and then they have an attached two-bedroom dwelling. We actually received this um, through a notice of violation. Um, we discovered it was being used, and, and we did not have permits for it. The property owner has taken very quick action, um, immediately contacted staff and began working with us to bring the property in compliance. They were not aware that they needed those permits. Um, they had purchased it and were told it was good to go. So um, as always, I'm showing you the supplemental regulations for short-term tourist rental. These are several of the things we look at. Each property owner is given a copy of these. Um, they are regulations they have to abide by if, if they're going to use the property as a, as a short-term tourist rental. And then this, it was provided by the applicant. This is the layout of the dwellings. The primary dwelling is outlined here in this orangish-brownish color. Um, this is the accessory two-bedroom dwelling, and you can see she's already noted the um, fire exit routes on there, and that will be posted or provided to renters. This is a blown-up aerial view of the property. You can see the two units here side by side, and the parking spaces for each unit. Um, four spaces will be provided for 1482 and 1480. Um, we'll have three spaces provided. We will also be limiting occupancy on those um, four people in 1480 and no more than six in 1482. This is the photo of the property. You can see the two units here. This is the parking area, and then you can see the wooded buffer that surrounds the property. This is the rear yard with a fence, and that's to provide um, privacy between the two units. This is the three-bedroom primary dwelling, and then this is the two-bedroom attached accessory dwelling. Here is a view of the entrance. Um, you can see they've placed directional You can see they've placed directional signage here, so it is, you enter through one entrance and you exit the other side, and this is looking back towards the end of Clay Street. This is looking back towards the town of, of Blacksburg. So the dwellings are located along the public portion of Clay Street. Traffic impacts, of course, will remain minimal, no more than you would expect with a single-family dwelling. They do meet parking requirements, and the access design that they have with the one-way-in, one-way-out, that does limit movements onto Clay Street. It's not located in a FEMA flood hazard area. They are served by public water and sewer, and it does have that natural wooded buffer. Seven-foot privacy fence in the rear yard does separate the dwellings. Fire safety will be addressed during the zoning and the building permitting process if this should be approved. The rental requirements of the owner are that gathering or parties will not be allowed, pets are not permitted, the property will be self-managed, there is a local caretaker, tenants must be at least 25 years of age and present the entire term of the rental, and quiet hours are from 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM. This property is located within the residential transition area of a comprehensive plan. You can see this mint-colored area here is urban expansion. And then these are the goals of the comprehensive plan that support this special use permit request. We have one in the planning and land use, cultural resources, and economic resources. This request does meet the regulations outlined in the supplemental regulations we looked at earlier. It does remain residential with no more impacts than a full-time residence. On-site parking is available. We did reach out to the town of Blacksburg, given the close proximity, they have not had any concerns that they have shared with us. And as always, we've notified adjoining property owners, posted the ad in the paper, and a public hearing sign on the property. We have not received any comments from the public regarding this request. The Planning Commission held their public hearing on May 12th. No one was present to speak. They did vote on a 9-0 to recommend approval to allow the special use permit with the following conditions. Occupancy shall be limited to four occupants at 1480 and shall not exceed six at 1482. The property shall be registered with the Commissioner of Revenue's Office for meals and occupancy tax. Any applicable permits must be obtained from the Building Department, and then all requirements for those short-term tourist rentals shall be met. That is all I have for you this evening regarding this request. I'll take any questions. Ms. Colbert is also here and can answer any questions you may have for her.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions before we open the public, Supervisor Ben?
I just want to make sure I understand that, is this town of Blacksburg water and sewer? It's not county water and sewer?
Correct, it is town of Blacksburg water and sewer.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Where it said no animals, dogs, or whatever, was that the county's idea or the owner's?
That was the owner's idea.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, I'm not seeing any more questions, so we'll go ahead and open this public hearing. We did have a sign-up sheet in the hallway. I did not have anybody sign up specifically for this public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to come forward and speak to this short, or this special use permit for a short-term tourist rental? Okay, seeing nobody come forward, I'm going to close that public hearing, and we'll move on to our next public hearing this evening. This is a rezoning on Carriage Road. It's a request by Carriage Road LLC to rezone 1.571 total acres from agricultural to transitional neighborhood development infill to allow a mixed-use development. Ms. Hopkins again.
That's also a mouthful. Yes, this is located in the southern portion of the county in Reiner. You can see on this map here, this is Reiner Road. This is Childress and Meadow Creek, Fairview Church, and Union Valley, so it's right before the intersection. Here is a view of the property. It is an existing church with, with dwelling. You might remember seeing this before. You did issue a special use permit for a contractor's storage yard. This is the zoning map. You can see here it's A1, and it does have that special use permit on it. This over here is all zoned business. So as stated, it was originally developed as a church, but ultimately ended up without a religious organization to occupy the space. In May of 2022, you approved a special use permit for a contractor's storage yard. The contractor was there for a while, but they have vacated the property, and now it's currently unoccupied. So the property owner and the potential tenant has met with us several times to discuss a proposed mixed-use concept that would include a community center, a coffee shop, a residential use for soccer coaches or staff, and then a soccer practice facility. So given the variety of those uses, we had to try to find a rezoning district that they would qualify for, that would also allow those multiple uses, and it was determined traditional neighborhood design infill might be the most appropriate zoning district for this. The coffee shop is intended to serve as a community hub. They will also use funds from that to support their soccer club, and it will be open from 7:00 PM, 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM. The community center will host a variety of programs. The applicant would like to work with local organizations and businesses to offer similar events, civic events, art classes, workshops, et cetera. The soccer training center, this is going to serve as a location for a local soccer club to provide year-round programs to the players. It does provide a more local facility. They do operate on a regional basis. I believe they go as far south as Abingdon. Will mainly offer indoor instruction within the main building. You do have an updated letter from the applicant that was submitted to them, and that's what this italicized portion here is. They have verified it's a 20-by-15-yard outdoor area. It will have minimal use, light recreational purpose or training, not big enough for a full soccer field to have games or, or events or anything like that. The existing single-family residence can be used as a long-term rental unit or as a live-work unit for employees of the soccer club or of the onsite businesses. Short-term tourist rentals would not be permitted in this zoning district. So this is just a sketch they have provided us. They're going to do some additional landscaping here on both sides, some landscaping in the front. They'll have to meet all landscaping as required by the ordinance. And this will be the area that they'll have, it looks like a full-size field, but it will not be a full-size field for training and recreational purposes here. And then this is the layout of the interior of the church. You can see here, this will be their training area, large meeting space. They'll likely be able to have some indoor soccer games for 4v4, maybe 5v5. This will be the coffee shop area here in the front with the entryway, and then they'll have some classrooms, video rooms, those type of things back here. The second floor will be dedicated to the coaches. So this is the view from Carriage Road on the left, and on the right is the view of Five Points Road and Carriage Road intersection, looking back at the property. This is the church facility, which is the primary existing structure, and then this is the existing single-family dwelling that we've referred to. Here is the rear yard. This is the area that they might be able to use for some outdoor training or recreational purposes. Again, it's, it's not suitable for a full-size field. And then this is the existing cemetery that is on site. The property provides two points of ingress or egress connecting to Carriage Road and one connecting to Five Points. It does offer off-street parking. They have approximately 55 parking spaces, which would be well-suited for the proposed uses they have, and actually is probably a little extra than what they would need. VDOT took no exception to the approval of the rezoning. The site is currently served by public water and sewer. It's not within a FEMA flood zone. They are going to add a trash enclosure area. We will require that to be screened per county code. No significant changes or improvements otherwise are proposed on the site. They are going to restripe the parking lot, and they will be installing that additional landscaping. The proposed project would operate primarily during daytime hours. Some special events or extended practices could extend beyond that, but they're expected, expected to happen infrequently, and most of the activities, of course, would be indoors. May increase the amount of noise, given that the site is currently vacant, but the vegetative buffer and additional landscaping would help decrease the impact of that noise on adjoining property owners. No lighting is proposed beyond standard safety, safety lighting for security. That is something they also clarified in the updated memo. All lighting that they will install will have to be in compliance with county code, and we will review that during site plan review. The existing cemetery will be respectfully maintained and preserved by the applicant. They have stated they would like to put in some pathways and some signage and landscaping in order to honor and protect the site's heritage. This is located within the Reiner Village. It's in the mixed-use designation in village expansion, as indicated here in the purple. This orange color is medium-density residential, with this color being low-density residential. Here are the comprehensive plan goals that are supported for this application, planning and land use, and to economic resources. This does provide a commercial resource to the Reiner Village with the addition of the coffee shop. It also provides the community center to support the community, utilizes the vacant structure for a mix of uses, and VDOT took no exception. Adjoining property owners were notified, and we did run legal ads and post the public hearing sign. We have received one comment from the public, which was provided to you. Additional comments may be received during the public hearing. The Planning Commission did hold their public hearing again on March 12th. We did have three members of the public come forward to speak. The Planning Commission ultimately recommended approval, nine to zero, for the request to rezone. There are not any proffered conditions as part of this rezoning request. With that, I will take any questions you have for me. The owner and applicants are here, if you should have any questions for them as well.
Great. Thank you. Does anybody, Supervisor Ben?
Is the coffee shop going to be open to the public, or is it just for the?
It will be open to the public, yes.
Okay. So will it be staffed, or will it be?
Yes, it will be staffed, and, and as much as possible, it will be staffed by members of the soccer club because they, they want to bring in money for the club.
Thank you.
Any, Supervisor King, do you have some questions?
They're not planting any lights on that small field, are they?
They are not planting any lights on the small field, no, sir.
If they decide to do that, they have to come back to you?
It would have to be approved during the, the site plan process. If they wanted to light that field, yes, they would have to get approval for that.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other questions? I do have a question about signage. Are they, it doesn't appear that they're proposing any signage for the coffee shop?
There is an existing monument sign structure in the front. As far as I know, they are not proposing any additional signage. With the rezoning to TNDI, they would be allowed no more than 150 square feet of signage on the property.
Okay.
And only one monument sign.
Okay. All right, and for this public hearing, I did not have anybody sign up to speak, but if anybody in the audience would like to speak on this rezoning request for Carriage Road LLC, please come forward. Seeing nobody come forward, we're going to close that public hearing and move to our third public hearing this evening. Sorry for the constant up and down.
That's okay.
This third public hearing is a request by Father and Gay LLC for an amendment to the 2025 Montgomery County Comprehensive Plan to change the policy map designation of approximately 633.72 acres of property from resource stewardship to village expansion. And again, Ms. Hopkins.
Awesome. So before I go into the details of the application, I wanted to go over some other details for those that we've heard a lot of confusion in the community, and so we just want to make sure we're clarifying everything and, and we're all on the same page, because it can be a confusing topic, especially when you get multiple applications. So we want to start first with what a comprehensive plan is. As you know, that is a guiding document. It does outline our county's vision and long-term goals for the next 20 years. We are currently redoing our comprehensive plan. We have Montgomery County 2025, and we are working on Montgomery Matters. We hope to have that wrapped up within the next eight months or so. We'll see how it goes. One thing a comprehensive plan does not do, it does not function as an ordinance. So it is a guiding document, is not codified. It does not dictate a specific type of development. It doesn't guarantee that development will even occur on a property. It is very much more long-term, less short-term, and it does not anticipate every future need or technological advancements, as we've learned in the past. And it does not prevent development under the existing zoning designations for properties. So it does not rezone property. In short, to compare the two, a rezoning does change a property zoning classification where the comprehensive plan is just a long-term vision and policy. The purpose of a rezoning is to allow property to be used for something other than what it's currently allowed to be used for. With a comprehensive plan amendment, it just updates the community's goals and policies that would guide decisions for future land use. So it, it is, it is definitely more of that policy versus that code. They both have a similar approval process. They do require analysis by planning staff, Planning Commission. We do hold public hearings, and then, of course, you all have the ultimate decision at the end. The impact, rezonings direct, effectively, directly affect what can be put on a property, and it's, it's specific. So a comprehensive plan amendment just guides those decisions, as I stated, so it's not any direct impact. And then timeframe, rezonings are immediate once approved, and while the comp plan designation is immediate once it's approved, it is that long-term vision, and sometimes property can change the, the comprehensive plan designation and not be rezoned for years, if, if ever at all. So we do have two applications on the Father and Gay LLC property. We have a comprehensive plan amendment, and we have a rezoning application. Each one of those is considered and evaluated totally separate. So the comprehensive plan amendment public hearing is tonight. That is what we are going to be discussing. We will not be discussing any details of the rezoning application or anything that's included in that. It will only be a comprehensive planning discussion. The rezoning application is operating under a different schedule. The applicant has actually asked to postpone that public hearing for that request, so it has not went to the Planning Commission yet. We do not have any dates determined, but once we do determine those dates, we will send all the adjoining property owners new notifications. We have advised them all by, by notice that it's been placed on hold. We will also re-advertise it according to law, and our website will be updated almost immediately, once we have those dates. We will discuss those rezoning details during those public hearings. Before I move forward, do you guys have any questions on that before we go forward?
Go ahead Supervisor Ben.
Is there a particular reason why we are trying to change the comprehensive plan right now for this specific area of the county?
So the owner has requested that, and I'll actually go over that some in this presentation for the comp plan amendment. What criteria has to be met in order for them to request a change?
Could they have, could they rezone it even if the comp plan wasn't changed?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
Not, not with the existing rezoning application they have in.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Vice Chair Fajekowski.
Yeah, Bree, did, is this, has this ever been discussed by the committee that you formed for, for reviewing the comprehensive plan for the whole county? Has this location come up?
We have discussed the Ellison Village and have reviewed some maps and started preliminary discussions, because that is our next phase of Montgomery Matters, is going out into the villages. That's what we will be doing this summer. So we have had some preliminary discussions, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions before we move on? Supervisor Biggs?
When you discuss the areas, do you discuss, since, you know, there is flooding there, is that part of the discussion when you're looking at? is that part of the discussion when you're looking at redoing things in a comprehensive plan?
Yes. So, when we... What we are looking at through the Montgomery Matters Plan, and this is countywide, not just this particular area. We look at all things. We look at developable area. So, what qualifies it as developed? Is it in a flood zone? Does it have some type of critical feature, such as an endangered species, you know, something like that that has been identified as critical? We look at steep slopes. Are there more than 25% slopes? And what areas of the county are those? We do look at prime farmlands, but we also look at things. What land has public infrastructure available to it? What transportation networks, all of those things. So, all of those things are considered when we look at developable land, yes.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
So, when we had the issue with the water pressure down at the schools down your way, Steve, is this anywhere near where the water pressure was bad last year?
Yes.
Okay. And all the water pressure is all okay now, right?
That's my understanding.
And do we know why the water pressure wasn't okay?
Can you answer that, Tom?
The water pressure off the fire hydrors and all was good. They had to put a new pump in down at the school.
So...
Nobody else in that area has called or complained about water pressure.
Okay. So, it was just a bad pump? But it was my understanding that the water pressure was all okay until the last time, maybe it had to be inspected. Is that correct?
That's something you'll have to ask schools.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay.
Okay. So, now we'll get into the comprehensive plan amendment. This property is located in the eastern portion of the county, as designated here. It is located right off of Route 11460. The star does appear a little farther back, and you'll see why here in just a second, because it does involve multiple properties, and so we tend to place that star right in the center. So, as you can see, all the properties impacted would be here in yellow, and then same over here. This is your policy map, so this is resource stewardship in green. The blue is considered civic. That is the location of the Eastern Montgomery Elementary and Eastern Montgomery High Schools. And then this orange slashed area here is medium-density residential. So, approximately 633.72 acres of Father and Gay property is located within the designated area of resource stewardship. The applicant has requested to bring it within the Elliston-Lafayette Village Expansion area to facilitate some future development of a portion of the property. 307 acres would be designated as open space, and then 326 would be designated as medium-density residential per their request. This is basically a map showing you this. This would be the proposed village expansion area, and then this is the proposed medium-density residential, and then this is the proposed open space. You can see the Eastern Montgomery Elementary School here and the Eastern Montgomery High School here. Here is the existing village area outlined in tan, and then the dashed area here is what is proposed to go into the village expansion area for Elliston-Lafayette. So, some background on this property. In March 10, 2008, the Board of Supervisors amended the land use designation of 20 acres of this property and included it into the village expansion to facilitate the construction of Eastern Montgomery Elementary School and to extend public utilities, public water and sewer. That land was designated as civic in the Elliston Village Plan. In 2021, Father and Gay requested removal of 606 acres from Agriculture/Forestal District 9. That was approved by the board October 25. And then in 2022, you may remember, a special use permit was requested to allow a community-scale solar facility. The Planning Commission did recommend denial of that, and the application was ultimately withdrawn by the applicant prior to your public hearing. So, policy map designations, resource stewardship, they are rural areas, and a lot of those areas are defined by our Agriculture/Forestal Districts, conservation areas, areas that don't have access to public infrastructure, such as water and sewer, national forest lands, state lands, private preserves, all of those. And then, of course, the predominantly 25% slope or greater. Those are undevelopable areas, and that's what we chose to designate as resource stewardship in Montgomery County. Majority of the county is resource stewardship. Village expansion, that's a natural expansion area for our villages. It is served or planned to be served by public water and sewer, and it does provide an alternative to scattered rural residential development. It's an opportunity to enhance the vitality of the existing villages by providing for compatible expansions of residential and commercial uses. So, after adoption of the comprehensive plan in 2004, the county did establish a policy to consider comprehensive plan amendments. This is what you were referring to earlier, Ms. Bone. We do allow comprehensive plan amendments to be initiated by a landowner or by the Planning Commission or by the Board of Supervisors. So, these requests are only accepted twice a year. We accept them in February and August. This one did come in February of this year. And then, in order to be approved, it has to meet one or more of the following criteria. There are four criteria here. The ones in bold with the check mark are the two that staff has identified as being met. So, the subject property was misinterpreted or overlooked in the comprehensive plan. We do not think that was true, because it wasn't an agricultural-forestal district at the time, so that's why it was designated as resource stewardship. Conditions have changed substantially since the last time, and I'll get into this in later slides as to why we think it meets this condition. An undue hardship exists, which substantially limits the use of the property. And then the amendment will effectively aid in the implementation of some goals of the comprehensive plan, and I'll go into that as well. In regards to the changing conditions, at the time of the adoption of the 2025 comp plan, public water and a sewer were not extended to this property. So, they did not have any access to it at the time, and we did not know that there would be a new elementary school there, so we did not know it would be extended. That extension, of course, occurred during the construction of Eastern Montgomery Elementary, and it now does provide available connections, actually, to the property line of the Father and Gay property. It was one of the contract agreements, I believe, for the purchase of the school. Prior to the construction of Eastern Montgomery and Eastern Montgomery High School, future residential development was limited by also the limitation of school infrastructure. The construction of these facilities has increased capacity in this area for student enrollment. And then it also further expanded the village boundary and changed the adjacent land use to the subject properties that are under request. So, the Elliston-Lafayette Village has continued to expand westward with the addition of commercial and industrial business ventures. That has probably further expanded the core. That is definitely something we are looking into as we go through this new comp plan amendment. Farming operations on Father and Gay have continued to decrease since the initial adoption of the comp plan, and the land was withdrawn from that Agricultural Forestal District. So, the request to include the subject parcels as part of the village expansion area, it would allow for a variety of housing units to be built, different types and sizes. That has been identified as a need for the county. That does not necessarily mean that it will be built according to the existing rezoning application. It just means that we believe housing could be developed on this property because there is access to public infrastructure, and it's no longer in the Agricultural Forestal District. The 2025 comprehensive plan, one of the main goals is to promote growth where it can be supported by infrastructure. The majority of our growth should be occurring within the two towns, the designated village areas and urban expansion areas. And so, this property would qualify to support some of that growth, and thus the comprehensive plan. So, further analysis, the proximity to the Father and Gay estate. There is a 1796 structure that is listed on the National Register of Historic Places. It should be noted that that is a non-binding designation. So, that means it's non-bound for development. It doesn't mean the county has any obligations to protect it. The surrounding land is also not listed in a historic district. The open space area, however, presented by the owners, would provide that buffer for that historic district and the land surrounding it. That is one of the reasons why they have requested that to remain as open space. The existing cemetery is also located within that area. The open-spaced land would remain agricultural. In order for them to do development on that property of any type of structures other than what's allowed by right in the agricultural zoning district, they would have to come back here to have another comprehensive plan amendment. Resource stewardship does allow .5 to 1 units per acre. The medium-density residential would allow up to 5 units per acre, and that does not include open-spaced roads and stormwater areas within that calculation. Again, adjoining property owners were notified. Public hearing ads were placed on the property. You do have multiple inquiries that have been forwarded to you. I believe one more come in after the preparation of this slide. I'm sure there are people here to speak this evening, and the Planning Commission held a public hearing on March 19. We had 16 members of the public speak at that public hearing. The Planning Commission did recommend approval on a 5-2 vote of the comprehensive plan amendment, stating that it complied with the criterion of the county's policy, given that conditions have changed since the comprehensive plan was last adopted in 2004. I will have any questions that you have for me. I'll be glad to take those. Steve Simonas is here on behalf of the owners, and I'm sure they can answer any questions you may have for them and may have a presentation, probably definitely want to speak, and then you can have your public hearing.
Okay. Well, let's ask questions first of you, and I'm going to start with Vice Chair Fidzikowski, because this is in your district.
I think I've brought up several questions to you over the last few weeks as far as stormwater and issues of that nature, and also the byright that the owners would have. So, I really... I don't have any further questions, but I appreciate you explaining the difference between the comprehensive plan and a zoning, rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Do we have any other questions for staff? Supervisor Bone?
So, this presentation, this slide right here, you can see where the land has been cleared, of which I would interpret as definitely more level than inclined. But when you get to the forested areas, it looks like, you know, there's some hollers and stuff like that. How does the 25% incline or whatever you were saying? How is that measured, or is that even relevant in any of this space?
So, the policy we have had with the comprehensive plan to date has been we try to follow property lines, because if you get out of following property lines, then it's really hard to determine exactly where the boundary is. So, for this, it encompasses the entire property. It would be up to the landowner, I guess, if they could develop those areas. The only thing I can go on is the rezoning application that we have in hand, and it does not show large development in that area, likely due to topography.
So, in this slide, it looks like the yellow section, you know, the upper half is hilly.
Yes.
But you're saying it's completely up to the developer.
We would review that...
I mean, I live in a hilly neighborhood myself, and a lot of the lots are more than 25%, I would say. So, I don't see a problem with that, but the county does.
And it's different when you look at it from a rezoning versus a comprehensive plan. This is policy, so this is just guiding documentation. Is some of that 25%? It may be, but we do follow the property lines. It's not saying, oh, it's more than 25%. We have to cut this chunk out. That would be up to be determined during a rezoning application, as to whether you thought that area should actually be suitable for development.
And then, my second question is, do we have anything in the comprehensive plan about view sheds? Because view sheds were a big deal when the solar thing was being talked about.
It speaks to view sheds in some areas of the comprehensive plan. It does speak to it in some of the villages, to protect the view sheds, that type of thing. And it definitely speaks to it when you look at things like telecommunications towers. View shed was a huge thing. That's why we have a ranking for those. So, there are some areas of the comp plan that does speak to view sheds, yes.
And are there any view shed specifications in the proposed change to this comprehensive plan amendment?
There are not, no.
It's part of a general...
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Do we have any other questions for staff? Supervisor Graffski?
Thanks. How would a potential amendment to the 2025 comprehensive plan in this case affect any updates that are drawn up or laid out in the Montgomery Matters update to the comprehensive plan?
So, with our...
Question is, can you override an amendment? If we were to pass an amendment?
Right.
Can you rewrite that with a new comprehensive plan?
So, the way we did the village plans before and the way we will do them again is if a property owner... If the property meets the qualifications, it has infrastructure. It can somehow conceivably be developed in the future, and they want to be within the village expansion area. They are bordering that village expansion area. There's not something outstanding about the property. We would allow them to remain in it. So, we do have some property owners that had conservation easements in several of our villages, and that's why some of those village boundaries look a little weird, is because they said, we're in a conservation easement. We don't want to be in a village. We're never going to develop. So, we drew the boundary around their properties. So, that is largely at the request of the property owners. We hope they come out and talk to us during community meetings and tell us what they want for their particular properties, but also what they want for their communities.
Okay. And so, let's just... If we were to grant the amendment...
Correct.
Whenever, tonight, I think we vote on that. But could you, through the evaluation process of the updated comprehensive plan, be like, no, this shouldn't be...
We would not do that, no.
Not do that? Okay. Okay. That's all.
Yes. We would not do that.
Supervisor Kits has a question?
So, and this is just for my personal knowledge on this one. So, when they say a proposed open space, what do we mean? What are we talking about here? It's proposed, yeah, we're going to keep it like this for a little bit, but if we did, we could develop it if we wanted to.
Um, no. In this case, they would have to come back before you in order to develop it with any structures. Now, if they wanted to do trails through there, that's like an allowable use of open space. It's recreational area. By right, if they wanted to build a house there, we couldn't stop them doing it by right, because, again, a comprehensive plan cannot override what's codified. So, they could do by right development. But if they wanted to go into this open space and do, I don't know, 100 homes, they would have to come back before you in order to have another comp plan amendment.
So, that's proposed medium-density. The other part's proposed open space, and they'd have to come back and reapply to have that rezoned?
They would have to apply for the comprehensive plan amendment...
And then the rezoning.
Correct.
All right. Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay. Mr. Simonas, do you have a presentation or anything you'd like to add?
Always have something to add on. Good evening. Steve Simonas with Ballzer and Associates. I don't have a specific presentation. I just want to speak to a couple of our slides here. Just going to go back to a couple here. So, I think the important thing that Bree mentioned is, well, there are a lot of things that she mentioned, you know, directly out of our application, where, you know, village areas and village expansion areas, that's where the county wants to grow. areas and village expansion areas, that's where the county wants to grow. That's where we've designated. As she mentioned, we have schools, we have good roads, we have water and sewer infrastructure. So as we started working with the family, the father and gay family on this almost two years ago now, looking at options on what they could do with that land, as Bree mentioned, they do have somebody that caretakes for the house and watches over the land, they do have people that run some cattle on it, but it's not as active a farming operation as it used to be. As we looked at this, you know, we had some very initial conversations with planning staff on what the process would have to be. And as you all probably know, most of you have been on for a while, when you've got a rezoning at the scale of the one that we've submitted, and again, push pause on for right now, if we don't have a Comprehensive Plan that lines up with that land use we're asking for, it just makes this, that next process, a little bit harder. So have we gone through rezonings in Montgomery County or other localities before where the comp plan doesn't exactly match up? Yes. But when you're looking at a big land use decision and question like this, that's pretty far out of what was originally anticipated and looked at back in '07, '08, it just makes sense to go through this process. And again, the biggest reason that we saw that this was an opportunity, as Bree mentioned, when the father and gay family sold the 20 acres for the elementary school to be built, part of that agreement was extension of water and sewer directly to this boundary that would allow, you know, for future connections. And show on the mouse here, but right here is Eastern Montgomery Lane kind of pulls into the school, it kind of dead ends right here at the end of my mouse there. And that right of way for Eastern Montgomery Lane ties directly into the father and gay property and water and sewer stub directly to that. The pump station was built with some extra capacity to allow for future residential growth on this property as well. Now, that doesn't mean you have to grant it with a rezoning, but it was looked at. So when those decisions were being made, it was this could be future residential property development in this area. So as we looked at how we wanted to envision, you know, some future development and future growth, we came up with a layout that you see here. So as Bree mentioned, extending that village expansion to include the full 600 acres, and we did have that discussion. Do you just pull off a piece of it? And as Bree mentioned, it's good, if you're going to bring something in, bring it in as one boundary, so you're not splitting zoning or splitting comp plan, you know, internal to an overall boundary line. So we looked at the overall village expansion. And the open space, to Supervisor Kits' question, that's a designation the county has within their comp plan, so it's not something, we're just saying it's open space. Open space is an actual designation, land use designation within that comp plan. So that's what we're proposing there. The medium density, you may ask, why are you looking at medium density there? For two reasons. One, it supports the type of growth that we would like to do in our rezoning request, but just as important is it matches the zoning or the comp plan designation of our adjacent properties in between the schools. So the residential properties down here at the bottom are medium-density residential as well as some of the ones on the other side of the high school. So it's consistent with some of the other development patterns that are down there. Couple other just quick points, and I'll answer any questions. We talked about the medium density. To Supervisor Bone's question about view sheds, that's one of the reasons we've pulled back the rezoning. There are a few things we want to adjust on that before we go to the Planning Commission, one of which is adjusting or mimicking and visualizing some of the view sheds there with what some of the homes may look like. Some of our neighbors had spoke to that. We did have a community meeting, a voluntary community meeting down at the elementary school before we had our first Planning Commission meeting. So we had a lot of our, the neighbors there in the Elliston-Lafayette area come out and talk to us, which we appreciated. So we heard some things in that that wanted us to just kind of push pause, like I said, and step back and make a few adjustments. But as far as tonight, again, what we're asking for is, based on the changes that we've seen down there with the infrastructure, the development of the schools, and as everybody on the board knows, the housing shortage we have here in Montgomery County, developable land in Elliston's pretty limited. Everything on the other side of 460, especially right here along the father and gays and the floodway, flood plain, so we can't develop over there. So there aren't a lot of large tracts down there that would allow, that the families would like to see some development happen and that the infrastructure and the topography and everything else would work in order to allow that to happen. So the question is, does this portion of Father and Gay, this 326 and the 307 is open space, does that make sense in the county with the growth patterns that we see and the housing need that we have? Is that something we could look for and get your support for some residential growth? I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Great, Steve. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for the applicant? And do you? Might want to turn on.
I do have one other clarification from Bree.
Well, come on up. Y'all can share the mic. Steve, don't go away yet.
Yes.
When Supervisor Kits asked his question, you mentioned byright. Would byright only apply if the Comprehensive Plan is adopted?
No.
Or, okay, so byright would apply either way?
Correct, correct. They could do byright development in agriculture A1 zoning district as is.
Okay.
With no amendments.
I just wanted, I wanted to make sure everybody was clear on that.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. And then Supervisor Ben, I think you've got some questions for Steve.
Bree, don't sit down. And some of this is for you, Bree, and I think some is for, potentially for Steve. But just look at the median, medium-density residential area. If this was approved and the adjoining, whatever, zoning for medium-density residential was approved, what would be byright? How many houses per acre could be put in that space, for example? Do you have a sense?
So we spoke to this a little bit in our Comprehensive Plan application text. So if it went to medium density, we'd have the ability to come in and ask for a rezoning to R1, to R2, I'm not sure, I guess R3, and the planned unit development, which is what we've asked for in the other application. So we're landing on that, and I can check Supervisor Bone and come back up real quick. I want to say we're in the 2 units per acre.
Okay.
For the overall development.
So in some of the developments that we've seen over the last eight years, like the developers jam all the houses in half of the space, but because they have all of the space, they can use that all as a calculation for, so it could be four houses per acre for the level areas and zero houses per acre. Is that true, how that works?
Yes, ma'am.
And then my other question is, what area around this space is actually conservation areas? Does anybody know? Because clearly the conservation areas were mentioned during the solar installation, the proposed solar installation, but I never asked the question back then, which parcels around it were the conservation areas? But this may be relevant.
Other parcels not owned by the father and gay family?
Right.
Okay, I'm not sure.
Do you have any idea?
I do not have the map that can show that now. I know there is a conservation easement over in here. I know Madison Marie's property has conservation easement on that. I'm not sure where that lies within here, but there are some conservation easements, and the existing agriculture-forestedal district does still exist. This property is just no longer part of that. That will all be considered during a rezoning request.
Right, okay.
So we would take a look at that.
Considered for a.
Will not be considered for a comp plan amendment, no, ma'am.
And then my last little question is, what is that little square in the lower right-hand corner, in the green area?
That's the cemetery.
Like cemetery?
That's the cemetery, yes, ma'am. And the house is just to the right of it.
Does anybody have any other questions for Steve or Bree before we open the public hearing? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you both. And we did have some folks sign up for this public hearing. Bree's going to put the guidelines for public address on the screen. In general, we do ask that people come forward. You have four minutes to speak, and we want to hear you state your name and where in the county you reside. And I'll call in order the people that signed up to speak at this public hearing, and then when we get to the end of the list, if there's anybody else that wants to speak, you will have an opportunity at that time. The first name that I have on the list is Sandra Wellens, and after Sandra Wellens, I have Alan Childress. Ms. Wellens, are you here? Come on up. Or come on down, I guess. Welcome.
My concern is.
And you might pull the mic down just a little bit.
I'm short. My concern is flooding.
Okay. Can you start with your name and where you reside?
Oh.
Sorry to keep interrupting you.
Sandra Wellens, and I reside at 8796 Roanoke Road in Elliston. I live between the river and 460, and I live right across from where they built the high school. And my concern is flooding because my house has been flooded twice, and I have pictures if anybody wants to see them. My house has been flooded twice from the high school, when they built the high school, once in '99 and once in 2000. And my concern is, I live downstream, and when they build these houses, all the runoff water, where's it going to go? It's going to come downstream toward us, and I'm afraid that we'll get flooded again. So that's my concern. I want to know if they can do anything, you know, for the flood, and that's my concern. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And if you wanted to share your pictures, you can leave them with our clerk, and she can share them with the board if you wanted us to take a look at those.
Okay, thank you.
The next person that we have signed up is Alan Childress. Following Alan Childress is Zach Milton. Welcome.
Good evening. Alan Childress, 3750 Old Town Road, Shawsville. I'm here tonight to speak in support of amending the Comprehensive Plan to reclassify the property in Elliston and Father and Gay from a resource stewardship to a village expansion. You know, I understand this is a very emotional and complex issue for a lot of people, and I respect that. However, I believe my opinion is grounded in fact and the long-term view of our community's future. First and foremost, it's already been talked about, you know, when the Comprehensive Plan was, you know, first initially adopted back 20 years ago, there were no public utilities, and now we have water and sewer that connects the Father and Gay property, and that definitely needs to be taken into consideration. Again, and not only have the conditions on this property evolved, all the surrounding properties in a lot of ways have as well because so many of them are in a land conservation easements. And I respect that. My family has some land in a land conservation easement, and I respect that, but this makes the Father and Gay property a unique and viable opportunity for thoughtful and planned growth in the eastern Montgomery County area. Third, you know, if this amendment's approved, the potential resulting development would directly support the implementation of the Comprehensive Plan. As we've seen, village expansion, Elliston included, is a key component of that plan. This project has the potential to meaningfully address housing needs in our part of the county. And finally, this is more on a personal note, but, and I recognize it's a little more opinion than fact, but I've lived in the area for 33 of my 36 years. My mom, her entire life, her siblings and parents, their entire lives. And I love my community deeply. I do. And because of that, you know, I believe it's disingenuous when people have stood up here and said that, you know, this is going to change our community overnight, and we don't want outsiders. I disagree with that strongly. I think it's disrespectful to say that. I think it's not who we are in our part of the county. I want people that want to be here, that want to move to our area and call what I know to be a great area home. The development's not going to change the community overnight. We know that. In reality, projects like this take a long time, more like a decade for a full build-out, and we shouldn't confuse progress with loss. So again, please approve this amendment because at its core, it meets the minimum requirements, but at the same time, more importantly, it represents a responsible step forward for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Zach Milton, and after Zach Milton, the last person that signed up in advance is Kimberly Homer. Welcome.
Thank you. My name's Zach Milton. I live at 1600 Mumaw Circle in Elliston, Virginia. I attended and spoke at the Planning Commission meeting and say that this growth is necessary for our area to maintain our voice and seat at the table when we discuss the future of our county. District C, which contains both Shawsville and Elliston, is outnumbered by residents who live in the town of Christiansburg. As every other town and community in our county has grown, this area has not, primarily because other areas, unlike other areas, big landowners have not sold, and much of the developable land is protected by conservation easements. Locals know that anywhere was to be developed, it would be this property. It has great proximity to our schools, available utilities, and probably most importantly, the owners do not live here. Now, I'm not sure if it's a seeker or anything to the supervisors, but some of those against this have been hostile towards county administration, and because of that, it was no surprise that the owners are not at the Planning Commission meeting or here tonight. I can't foresee any other landowner who actually lives here dealing with that. So for the thought of this being the beginning of the end for our small town, it's really the only place available for growth. This is my 20th anniversary from graduating from Eastern Montgomery High School. Last year's graduating class was the same size as mine. Can Auburn, Christiansburg, or Blacksburg stay the same? You all know the facts that we are hardly at half-capacity in that school. We've lost the availability classes, we fought off middle school consolidation, and many other issues that can help, and this can solve many other issues that we currently have. I hear we have a large homeschool community. That's fine. This development is not designed to interfere with that. It's located next to our public schools and will advocate for them. Our valley has amazing views. This property does help contribute to that. Is the county willing to purchase this property to conserve it for that? What rights the father owners have? What else? Why else would there be public utility hookups at the edge of property? If this county was owned, was a county-owned property similar to the old Blacksburg High School, wouldn't other areas want it to be sold for the highest price, similar as these owners do? There seems to be great animosity towards the people moving into our area, that locals have a divine right and power over anyone who may move here. I myself have lived here my entire life. I can tell you with great certainty that many of the very best and most involved people in our community have moved here from somewhere else. Some think locals can't afford these homes, that they're not affordable housing. The chair of the Planning Commission, Mr. Rice, probably said it best, that you cannot lower the house or the cost of housing by limiting its availability. Since I spoke at the last meeting, I've been contacted by several people who were born here, who are locals, who would move back to this development. There's a few newer houses near the high school. Good majority are owned by graduates of Eastmont, and the values of those homes are comparable to this new construction. There will be some locals who will buy these houses, possibly even freeing up the cheaper houses for others to buy. You can look at the census numbers and show income disparities between Elliston and other areas. A big census indicator number is that we have 50% of households in Elliston who are owner-occupied, over 91% in Reiner. It's a big difference. One of my favorite characters in movies is George Bailey from It's a Wonderful Life. George Bailey's greatest contribution to Bedford Falls was championing homeownership, going as far as asking local leaders, doesn't it make them better citizens? Without him here to fight for it, it fell into Potterville. This development is our biggest opportunity for homeownership and to create a better citizens for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. And the last person we had signed up was Ms. Kimberly Homer. Welcome.
Good evening. I'm Kimberly Homer. I live at 222 Price Street in Blacksburg, and I am here to ask you to please, please do not Blacksburg-Elliston. I've lived in Blacksburg since 1980. It's a college town, I get it. But, you know, talk to anybody that lives in Loudoun County, talk to anybody that lives in Chester, Pennsylvania. It's not better. And these houses that are going to be built are not going to be occupied by people who are homeless. Nobody who is homeless can get a mortgage. Nobody that lives in Elliston now and doesn't own a home is going to be able to get a mortgage. This is not going to serve the people in Elliston. I don't think it's even going to serve the people in Montgomery County unless they happen to be absentee landlords. And as far as the Comprehensive Plan, you also didn't anticipate that the Mountain Valley Pipeline was going to come through. That's not anywhere in the Comprehensive Plan. Oh, yes, we want a big fracked gas pipeline right through our county. I mean, it's already there. It's a public utility, right? Why not build, I don't know, a nuclear power plant there? Because then you would get the most amount of real estate tax revenue that you could possibly get. We are losing our agricultural heritage. If something happens to Virginia Tech and it doesn't. If something happens to Virginia Tech and it doesn't keep growing, and Carillion goes bankrupt, and we have no employers, you're gonna have four hundred houses covered with vinyl that nobody wants to live in. And you're not gonna have anybody to pay your property tax. But meanwhile, that agricultural area, there could be sheep there. Virginia Tech is doing research on wool as an insulating material. So we could be rehabbing homes that are already under roof so that there is affordable housing. These houses are not affordable. They keep saying, "We don't have enough housing. We don't have enough housing." No, we don't have enough affordable housing. And this is not going to change that. It's just going to make it worse. And as far as underutilizing your schools, you could be doing trades at Eastmont High School. You could be doing a childcare center in the elementary school. There's a significant Hispanic population in the Shawsville-Elliston area because they can afford it. There is affordable housing there now, and that's where they live. And when the floods happened, you also didn't anticipate that we would have two significant floods in six months' time. That was also not anticipated in the comprehensive plan. But it happened. And it's gonna get worse. And we need our agricultural land. We need our woods. Please, please, don't destroy the character of this county. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. That concludes the end of the sign-up sheet. And I do want to just circle back to Ms. Wellens. Your photos are gonna make it their way to that end. So please don't leave without picking those back up. They've circulated through the table. If anybody else would like to come forward to speak to this, please come forward. Just don't forget to state your name and where you reside, and you'll have four minutes. Welcome.
Hey, Steve. I say now this is my second meeting that I'm coming to. My name is Alden Baker Ellery. And I live at twelve-sixty Echo Hills Road in Ellison, Virginia. I came to the previous Planning Commission meeting with some initial thoughts and reservations about the development. But I've since had a chance to think it through a little further, get some feedback from some other people. And I had a few other things that I wanted to share. I recognize that the lines between what is appropriate for the overall comprehensive plan versus what is more appropriate for rezoning conversations may be a little wishy-washy here. So I appreciate if y'all hang with me. It may be a little repetitive, but I will do my best to stick to the important points. So one of the things that I think has been mentioned a number of times is the historic value of Father and Gay. And although there doesn't seem to be any sort of official obligation other than the wishes of the family to preserve some of that area as open space, as an older, very significant founding home in our community, I think that it would be important to consider what other archaeological finds there may be, even those that may be further from the home, including the possibility of burial grounds of formerly enslaved people who worked on the property at one time. I think it is important to know where we come from and what our history involves. I mentioned previously that I have concerns about the lack of existing infrastructure to support the volume of people a large housing development like that could bring. Again, we have limited emergency services, the lack of rescue squad, the strain on our one doctor's office and one dentist's office, and no proper grocery store to speak of. My hope is that conversations with the builder would include these issues and the possibility of mixed-use areas or space left for this kind of development to serve the community as a whole, not just a specific large housing development. In recognition of the natural beauty of the area, I would ask that you consider also the possibility of a low-density housing development with some residential height restrictions to allow minimal disruption of the natural space to preserve the view for those traveling on four sixty and in recognition of the plentiful wildlife that lives out there. I know even in our property, I couldn't tell you how many deer trails cut through there. The speed limit on that section of four sixty is fifty-five miles an hour. And people often drive faster. In the interest of safety, a speed limit reduction might also need to be considered. VDOT consulted for that. Much of that stretch of highway has been addressed as also part of the floodplain for the Roanoke River. And since I've lived here the last seven years, there have been several times the quick rise of water has created dangerous driving conditions in the curve on Seneca Hollow Road closest to four sixty, such that people have had to be rescued from their cars by raft. I would encourage you to thoroughly examine the changes in the landscape to allow for this development and how they could affect runner water runoff, including the possibility of making standing water on or near four sixty worse. Some additional safety considerations might be thinking about soil disruption, including chemicals and natural gases like radon that may be released as a part of that. I would ask that you consider that impact on the safety of neighboring homes and of their wells, which are common here. The off-gassing of the plastic and vinyl-based materials may also need to be considered.
Thank you, ma'am. Your time is up.
Thank you.
Does anybody else want to come forward and speak to this public hearing? Come on up. Come on down. Welcome.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Paige Williams. My husband and I live at five-ninety-one Allegheny Spring Road in Shawsville. It's the old Sneed House, if you're familiar with the area, across from Laborery Sod Farm. I spoke at the previous meeting, and I would like to share my thoughts with you. I realize that my concerns may be more appropriate, like she said, for the rezoning. But I'm just gonna do my best and would appreciate you bearing with me. My family and I did not grow up here. We chose to move here because we were drawn to the quiet, open land, the lack of traffic, and the values that define our community. We came for the rural lifestyle, and we've really rooted ourselves deeply in it. The home that we live in was built in seventeen sixty. It has stood in this valley for over two-hundred-and-sixty years. And my husband and I see ourselves as stewards of the history and of the land and the legacy that surround it. I'm speaking tonight to strongly oppose the proposed development of the Father and Gay property. This project would bring four-hundred-and-nine homes to land that is currently zoned for agricultural use, land that has been in the same family since the eighteen thirties and includes a historic home. That's not growth. That's transformation. And it's not that we're just opposed to outsiders. I don't like that. We love people. We want people in our community. But that type of growth transforms a place, and it would increase our population by fifty percent. It would single-handedly change the culture and the composition of an entire community. And we do not want it. The development would nearly double our population and permanently alter the character of our rural area. Traffic would rise dramatically. Public services, like schools, fire and rescue, and maintenance would face a strain they're not built to handle. And then we just learned tonight we don't even have a truck. So, anyway, okay. One of the requirements to amend the comprehensive plan was that there had been a change or increase in local businesses. Well, we do have a new pizza place, but I, and we, I don't think that's what they had in mind. We do have a Dollar General, but we do not have a grocery store. We do not have the business or retail infrastructure to support four-hundred-and-nine homes. The developer argues that this fits into the village expansion model. But our town is not a walkable, walkable hub with transit access and dense infrastructure. It's rural, and it's agricultural. There is no emergency right now that exists and justifies this type of shift. And please, let me be clear. This is not a benevolent action where, for affordable housing. But based on the numbers that they've shared with us, this will not be affordable to our community. It's a high-volume, profit-driven development placed in a low-density rural area because the land is cheaper and the zoning rules are easier. And to me, that's not benevolence, that's opportunism. Our median household income is significantly lower than that of Christiansburg or Blacksburg. If the developers actually took time to understand the people and the community and what our housing needs are, they would know that these homes are not appropriate for our community. This is not a plan that meets a local need. It's a marketing strategy dressed up as community service. Our family chose to live here in a home that was built before America was a nation. That decision came with a responsibility, not just to protect the house, but to respect the rural character, open space, and slower pace of life that have defined this place for centuries. I really urge you, please, preserve our farmland, protect our open spaces, respect our history, and please say no to this type of development.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anybody else like to come forward to speak on this public hearing? Come on up. Come on down. I'm never gonna get this right. Come forward. How about that? Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Susan Creasy Moffett. I am actually a resident of Baltimore, Maryland. I grew up in Shawsville. I lived the first thirty years of my life in Shawsville, and I moved away to continue my education. I've seen the changes that have occurred, you know, for the past twenty years or so with the New River Valley. And, you know, it's very different from when I left. And I've listened to my parents for the past twenty or so years complain about property taxes. And I think that this development is gonna affect people in that way. And this development is going in a community with a forty-two percent poverty rate. Nearly half of the community, they're poor. And you're putting in houses that cost between two-hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars to three-hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars. And you have to have at least a seventy-thousand-dollar, seventy to eighty-thousand-dollar income to be able to afford that home. People of Ellison, median income is thirty-three thousand dollars. I listened to the second portion of the Planning Board meeting. And, you know, what we've been hearing is three to four-hundred thousand dollars. What I heard, there was this exchange between Mr. Kroll, Mr. Price, and Mr. Simones about single-family residential estate homes and something about a million dollars. Nobody in Ellison could afford a home that is a million dollars. Like, there are very few people in the county that would be able to afford a home that is a million dollars. That's predatory. It's predatory. You're going into a poor community. You're putting in these homes that they will never be able to buy. On their best day, they will probably never be able to buy. I think it's sick. I think it's disgusting. I think it's gross. It's being built on a plantation, a place where there was human suffering and misery that we will never know. I think it's disgusting. I'm not a person of color, and neither are anyone else of you up here. We're paving over that nasty part of history that no one wants to talk about. I think it's disgusting. I think it's ghoulish. There could still be enslaved persons' remains from those enslaved people. They still could be very well buried on that property. I spoke with Mr. Fidjikowski, one of my friends that I grew up with in high school. He sent me a photo on Facebook of basically what was the headstone of my great-great-great-grandfather's, just his grave, somewhere out in the mountains in Montgomery County. You know, when people owned slaves, you know, I mean, it's, I'm jumping ahead here, but when people owned slaves, you know, they didn't always document the slaves that they owned. With the passage of Colonel Hancock, I think there was documentation of around seventeen to twenty slaves that he owned. They were property. They didn't document slaves because they were children, because they were elderly, because they were sick, because they were disobedient. It is highly likely that there are enslaved persons buried on that property. And you're going into the wilderness, I believe. It's there, the mountainous area. That's one of the same places where my grandfather's buried.
I'm sorry, your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to come forward to speak to this public hearing? Come on. There you go.
My name's Josh Williams. I live at five-ninety-one Allegheny Spring Road in Shawsville. I know a lot of the comments you've heard tonight aren't really, really related to the comprehensive plan and how this project fits in the comprehensive plan. And this project may fit the comprehensive plan with no problems, even with a slight amendment. But the growth that the comprehensive plan envisions for Montgomery County, is it gentrification? Is it driving out people who currently live in the county? Because there are many lower-income housing developments in Shawsville-Elliston area. And a lot of people are being driven out already because their rents have gone up. And so as property values increase, their rents are gonna continue to go up. And a lot of folks in these lower-income areas, they're trailer parks. A lot of them are trailer parks. And so when you can't afford to live in a trailer park anymore, where do you go next? Where's their next option? And so my concern is, I wanna see growth. I'd love to see Montgomery County grow. I'd love to see Ellison grow, Shawsville grow. But how? How do we want that to grow? Do we want it to grow with four-hundred-and-nine units, possibly twelve to fifteen hundred people on one farm? Is that how we want to grow? I don't think, I don't think that was the vision, perhaps, in the comprehensive plan for Shawsville, for Ellison, for Eastmont, like it would be for Blacksburg, like it would be for Christiansburg. Dropping in a development like this, just outside of Christiansburg or Blacksburg, no big deal. It's not, it's not a significant disruptor of the culture. Shawsville-Elliston, it's gonna be a significant disruptor of the culture. I mean, four-hundred-and-nine units, potentially twelve to fifteen hundred people. There are currently only a thousand residents in Ellison. This would replace the people who currently live in Ellison. Their political power, their voice in the community. And it's, we talk about, we want to grow. It's a different kind of folks. And I don't just mean outsider, "Come on in, come on in," whatever. It's great. But Eastmont is full of people who are connected to the land, people who own property, they grow a garden, they're connected to the seasons and the land. The house we bought didn't even have HVAC when we first moved in. We were like, "How did the people live here before? So hot in the summer." People are connected to the seasons. They're connected to that. And what's gonna come in is a subdivided, medium-density neighborhood. That's like downtown Blacksburg, in the middle of Ellison. People who are connected with the land, people who are connected with the community, people who are connected with the history. And oftentimes, folks who live in a subdivided neighborhood like that, they'll live anywhere. It doesn't matter if it's, if it's in the country, if it's in town, if it's in the city. And so it's gonna bring a different demographic. It's gonna change the culture. And I would encourage you to not approve the amendment. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? I am not seeing anybody else come forward. So I am going to close this public hearing. And I'm getting pretty strong indications that some of my colleagues would like to take a break. So we are going to take a ten-minute break and reconvene at nine-twenty-four. Okay. We are going to go ahead and resume this meeting. The next item on our agenda is public address. And we did have a sign-up sheet out in the hallway. I do have two people that have signed up for public address. The first person that has signed up is Bob Beard, followed by Wayman Pack. And I understand that Mr. Beard has a PowerPoint presentation this evening. Thank you, Jen, for getting him started. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, and good evening. My name is Bob Beard. I live here in Christiansburg. First off, let's start with some good news. I was on their website, specifically on the website, on the MCPS website, and according to Stacker, Montgomery County Public School Systems is ranked number 10 as the best school district to work for in the state of Virginia. So, out of 100-some school districts, Stacker ranked them number 10. That's a great place to work. You know, there's only a 13-to-1 student teacher ratio, and so, I just wanted to congratulate MCPS for being a great place to work, according to Stacker's. All right. So, you know, this is budget season. We've been talking about budgets, and, you know, you already know that I'm opposed to, you know, any tax increases. So, you know, it's my civic duty to come up with some ideas on how to keep our tax rates down. And so, there's a presidential executive order to NDEI, not just implement a name change. You know, and they discussed that name change on March 4th at the school board meeting. And overall, that means $5 million. If they don't get rid of DEI, that means $5 million of federal funding will be lost to MCPS. You know, and this was one of the slides from that presentation that night. And as you see, it's very inclusive. I mean, there's everything on new teachers, three departments, so on and so forth, equity leads. And equity leads actually is a budget item. You know, so, you know, all of this is all part of the strategic plan, so I'm not really seeing a change than what we currently have been having in place for the last couple of years. Okay? So, next is, let's look at the enrollment, or the profile of the students at Montgomery County. We have 9,500 kids. The Asian race makes up about 5%, African-American is 4%, Hispanic 6%, multiracial 7%, and white 78%. Okay? You know, what kind of caught my eye was the four distinct communities. I'm not sure what those are. You know, I don't know if those are based on behavior, you know, such as identifying as a furry, or maybe the socioeconomic segments, you know, can we, you know, I would like to see some reports and grades and academics based on socioeconomic to see if that's the issue versus behavior. So, now, I got a new word of the day, White Supremacy Conference. Okay? Now, that's pretty scary. I started talking to some teachers and some other folks, and, you know, there are such conferences. You know, there are conferences called white supremacy conferences, and they're for educators. And my question is, should a school system send educators, administrators, and principals to these types of conferences? So, parents, friends, neighbors, friends of Montgomery County, our school system is sending people to white supremacy conferences. Okay? They do it for two years in a row now. That's just absolutely incredible. It just shocks me. Okay? And also, we're talking about money. The DEI payroll is over $300,000 for Gailing Wood and Stacy Wright. So, my idea is if, you know, if we look at their pay raises, four to six times higher than an average teacher. Well, we have a base pay raise for upper admin, so we can use that money to help the teachers. Because the top NCPS admin get to keep their lifestyles as their pay raises outflank inflation and the tax growth. So, next is, you know, a perfect opportunity. I don't understand what diverse pathways to learning means, but, you know, how is DEI or equity being evaluated? It's not being based on academics, because for years, demographic educational trends have not changed. They've remained the same.
Thank you, Mr. Beard.
Thank you.
You've got, thank you. And the next person that signed up was Mr. Wayman Pack. Sorry, we've got to do a slide change just real quick, Mr. Pack. Thank you, Jen. Welcome, sir.
Good evening, board. My name is Wayman Pack. I live on Piney Woods Road in Rider. And I have attended many board supervisors' meetings over the past couple of years, and one thing has become apparent to me. When the opportunity to spend the money of the taxpayers on something new, some of you are like a child's English, shiny new toy. You can't wait to get it, either because someone else has one, or you want it before someone else has one. I look back at the meeting on February 24th this year to refresh my memory of the purchase of the 50-year-old building on Roanoke Street, regardless of the reasons given by this board. The one-year-old appraised value, which supposedly reflects the price it should bring on the open market, was less than half the purchase price, which didn't include the $165,000 for architectural and engineering services. There have also been no open discussions of the cost to bring this building up to the standards that are required once these services are rendered. But I can assure you that considering the age of the building, it would not be inexpensive. But this horse has already left the barn. There's no turning back now. You'll have to spend many additional taxpayer dollars to make it what you desire. Considering the one-cent tax increase that was discussed last Thursday, be voted on next Monday, and I've gone through your proposed FY '26 budget line by line, and have two pieces of good news for you concerning our schools. Number one, at the end of the school budget section, there is a section called addenda and reductions discussion. Quote, "Addenda consist of dollars over and above the base budget target for operating and capital outlay expenses. Recommended addenda items are often funding, provided for new initiatives or expanded services, but may also include normal cost increases. Addenda reductions may reflect reduced revenue and/or expense needed to equalize revenue shortfalls." Quote, "No addenda." Number two, there is almost $900,000 in proposed spending in your budget that is not mandated. Use your discretion and free up some of these funds that you're gifting to these organizations and use them for necessary items, not shiny new toys or wishes. And I also have one very important request to make of this board concerning the next assessment process. Whoever you hired to provide the new assessment to justify the price of this land and building purchase, please don't ever send them to my house to assess my property unless you want to take it and sell it for unpaid taxes. Because if you double its value, as sure as God made little green apples, I won't be able to pay them. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to come forward during public address? Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Kim Bowman. I live in Christiansburg, 535 Arrowhead Trail. And I, again, want to say that I'm against the tax increase. I like everybody else like nice things, but I do believe that our budget is blown out of control. Some of you know, I've been involved in nonprofit work and outreach work in this community for a number of years, and I care about the little people, too. But I just wanted to give you one example of where we're at, because some people don't seem to understand. When I took over the food pantry, the Given Tree Food Pantry, in late 2018, we were serving 100 clients a month. We went in with the Agape Center, a larger organization, by the way, has never took a dime from the county or the town. And this month, we served 1,900 people. As I said at the last meeting, we have a problem, and nobody's addressing it. And if we continue this way, it's going to get worse. This is the low season. After the holidays, those numbers are supposed to go down, but they're continuing to go up. We're serving all of the people in this community, not just the people with great big salaries. So, please take those people into consideration. And offering them to go stand in a line and ask for a discount on their taxes is not a nice thing to do to people, you know? We're putting homeless people, we're building new parks, and everything's really fancy. Did you know we have elderly people who are sleeping in those parks and have to cook their meals on the grills because they can no longer afford housing? I mean, we have to look at those things, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else? Would anybody else? Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Darlaunne McChain. Didn't come with a canned thing to say, but I'd like to ask each one of you.
Ms. McChain, could you state where you reside? I apologize for that.
Christiansburg.
Thank you.
I'd just like to ask every one of you, barring Todd, why you think you're special enough, I know you can't answer me, but I want you to think about this, why you're special enough to have a 50% raise? I mean, I do think you should have gotten raised, but 50% is a little excessive. And then the fact that you spent half a million, too much money on a building, just, and then you want to dig into my pocket a little bit more. I come here when you raised the taxes before and said, "Please don't do it. I can barely make my house payment now." Okay? You're driving me out of this area. You know, stop, because you're never going to stop. Hey, how about telling the school not to, they're going to lose their, they're going to lose their state funding because they put it right in, I mean, it is on YouTube. We're just going to rename DEI. Just wait till the president sees that. You guys are going to be digging some more, I guess, in our pocket to make up for their lack of doing what they're supposed to do, according to our president right now. I'll tell you one thing, you don't think of anybody else. You don't think, you know, you say, "Kids are hungry?" baloney. Kids get fed at school. If they don't pay for it, if they don't have the money, they still get fed, and their parents get a bill, their parents don't pay it, the taxes do. So don't say, "Oh, the kids need something to eat, they're hungry." No, they might be hungry at home, but they're not hungry at school. Okay? So that's baloney, and we're not buying it. Okay? I've had enough. Stop taxing us to death.
Thank you. Would somebody else like to come forward and speak during public address? Seeing nobody else, we're going to close public address. We do not have an addendum this evening, so we, our next action item is to go into work session. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. And Madam Clerk, if you'll call the vote, the roll, please.
Mr. Fitchakowski?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Grafsky?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Chair de motz?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Okay, our first item in work session this evening is in reference to a letter we received from the town of Christiansburg for increased fire and EMS funding, and I will turn that over to our county administrator, Ms. Hill.
Chris is going to give us a little update tonight about where we stand with this process. We have talked with you about it before and about the request, but we just wanted to go into a little bit more depth this evening.
Thanks. Let's see if this thing is, I have to turn it on, sorry. Good to go. So tonight, we wanted to present to you a general overview of the request, you know, more publicly in the letter by the town of Christiansburg Town Council, related to our fire, their fire and EMS department, and the funding that is involved in, from the county to the town of Christiansburg. We don't necessarily plan to dig into and really present lots of details in terms of data or calls, et cetera, but, but just to kind of give you that kind of high level. Includes information related to call volume and their assessment of costs for services, and more specifically, in the unincorporated area of the county, and I'll touch on that. And then they did have a proposed 50-50 cost share model that they were kind of presented at the end of the letter. In terms of some background, both towns, Blacksburg and Christiansburg, do provide fire and EMS services, certainly within the towns, and then also within their first due area that extends outside their corporate boundary, and that's kind of referred to in the unincorporated portions of the county. And that's their first due, that's their first responsibility. And so in Christiansburg, they, you know, drive outside of town and absolutely respond to calls as requested. We also just kind of highlight, when we look at the data, we're trying to use the NRV 911 Authority as kind of our base, just to maintain consistency, so that we're kind of comparing the same level of data, the same detail of data across the board. There are other measurements, there are other, you know, databases, and some agencies, you know, record things a little bit different. So we're, when we approach this, we're, you know, using that as kind of the baseline to start with. In terms of our current funding, the funding is provided by the county to both the towns, and in this case, to the town of Christiansburg, and it kind of works through the county Fire and Rescue Commission and their recommendation that comes up through the budget process. And to give you a little perspective, in 2024, I've listed up there Christiansburg Fire and Christiansburg EMS, and at $125,000 and $103,000, and then they did request additional funding in our current budget, which was increased $30,000 for fire and $47,000 for the EMS services. There is no real formula. That number is, that's what they asked for. The commission looks at all the asks from all of our volunteer agencies and evaluates them, and then, you know, puts together a final recommendation, again, that comes through the budget process. And, yeah, all those items I just said, each volunteer agency requests, whether that's for operating funds or, you know, small capital, those funds are not included in large capital, like Chief Hanks was discussing earlier, in terms of vehicles and the higher capital items for their requests. So this is really just their operating request. One of the priorities that the board has asked staff to pursue, and we're currently in the draft stage, is a countywide comprehensive services study. So we wanted to kind of highlight what that is, because it does, it will have some relationship to their request. We do have a draft RFP that's under review by the two towns to get feedback from them, which we hope to have in the next week or so. The process ultimately will collaborate with our two towns, as well as the university and all of our volunteer agencies, to really gather input, you know, see how things are operating, and then really kind of focus on what our current, but also more importantly, what our future needs are, and how we will address those with recommendations. It can look at, and we're going to ask to look at just future station locations, looking at development patterns and call volume, and where those efficiencies could be, so to highlight stations, staffing models, you know, there's some different ways to approach it, but when you start working into the career model, our goal and objective is to have a combined volunteer and career model, but looking to the future, it's just how do we support the volunteers, but also, as needed, how do we implement additional career staff as needed? It'll focus on, you know, our first due areas, those are geographically defined for each station and how they respond, and that's to make sure they're responded to efficiently, you know, with the right kind of equipment and within the right timeframes. And then also take a look at equipment needs. You know, we have a very well-stocked amount of equipment for all of our departments, and Chief Hanks touched on it, and we're catching up with, in terms of funding and replacing, but that, you know, has a long future in front of us, so we need to make sure we know what we're buying and how much it's going to cost to make sure we can fund it appropriately. One of the other things the study could look at, if the board would desire, is more of a financial model of, since we don't have a real formula, it's based on what they ask for and then making sure it works in the budget. Is there a better funding, you know, formula or a cost-for-service approach that we could at least evaluate and see if that would add some value? And then it may relate back to how our relationship is with the town to find what the reasonable cost response is to providing services. We would expect the RFP to be pretty much finished and on the street within no more than 30 days, and then a typical RFP process takes about 90 days, from the day it goes out to pretty much when we sign an actual contract. So it's something we'll start very shortly, in the upcoming weeks, and then kind of have wrapped up this summer. And then that would start the actual study process. So that's just a little perspective on the RFP. And then the key kind of question is, you know, what are our next steps? We still need to do more additional financial analysis and kind of call, call analysis to evaluate, you know, what is a reasonable cost-for-service formula model? How much should we be working with the town to help provide their services? And kind of establish some value in developing a model for funding that would give us some perspective of supporting our volunteers, but also supporting the two towns. And then ultimately, in Christiansburg's letter, they formally asked for a meeting with both the elected bodies together to talk about this topic. So, you know, what would be the direction of the board? How soon should we meet? And then, and then, once we have that, we'll work with staff to have that formulated in the right kind of presentation.
I have been in discussion with Randy Wingfield, the town manager, and the town would like to meet with the, with the Board of Supervisors as soon as you're able to do that. They do recognize that we don't, we have not included it in our budget, we have not included funding for this request this year, but they still would like to meet as soon as it is feasible. I don't have specific dates from them yet. If you have some specific dates you would like to share with me, we could do that and move forward in that manner.
So I'd be happy to answer, answer any questions that I can, but also solicit what questions, I think what we're trying to face, what questions do you have that you would want answered in this type of discussion and process, so that we can be working on that as well? And of course, we have some of our own, and kind of looking at what they submitted, and, you know, what's important to you to know.
So I think the two goals then from this portion of the work session is, do we want to meet? We need to come to a consensus on that. Do we want to meet with the town of Christiansburg? And then, what additional information do we need from our staff to prepare for that meeting? Correct.
Right. And then, as Chris said, we'll work in the future to do the financial analysis that we need to, to evaluate the request for future years.
So let's handle the easier question first. Do we want to meet? Can we do just a simple thumbs up and down on that, Marty? Okay. So do we want to meet with the town of Christiansburg? I'm seeing all thumbs up, so the answer to that is yes. And maybe we can, let's talk about what questions people need answered, and that might give us an idea of how long it can take for us to prepare for that meeting. I'll start with Supervisor Kits, again, because you're our liaison to the Fire and Rescue Commission, so.
Well, I've had a chance to talk to a lot of the town council members individually, and the mayor from Christiansburg. I feel like we're in a pretty good spot, but we'd still like to get some stuff done where the board as a whole can sit down with them. I'm not sure what more I could put in, because the biggest thing was making sure they get involved with the RFP, to make sure that when we put out this request, that we know that the town's needs are considered, that we make sure that Blacksburg, Christiansburg are represented, and the university, and that we're able to, because I think eventually the goal is to help offset some of those costs with the services that we, yeah, I'm sorry, with the services that we can provide for that. So, I'm not sure, because I do into this a lot, so a lot of my questions have already been considered, like, in the RFP, and have already been put forth, so I'm willing, I'd more like to hear what everybody else has to say.
Sure. All right. So I will turn now to Supervisor King.
I thought we decided a while back to have a meeting with the town officials, and I thought we was going to do that before we sent out the RFP.
My understanding on that was that the town managers and I would review that, but if you want to have the meeting before we send it out, we could do that, if that's the.
No, that's fine. I was just looking back at my records.
And Supervisor Bone, do you have any?
Yeah. So, Chris, you covered a lot, and for someone who's not overly familiar with the Fire and Rescue, just for a clarifying question, the amounts of dollars that have been in our budget for the last two years, are those primarily covering the cost of Christiansburg Fire and Rescue to cover Montgomery County calls?
Do you want to, I mean, I can.
I'll be glad.
Okay, go ahead.
The town has indicated that the amount that we're providing is not sufficient to cover the calls that are in the unincorporated portion of the county.
Do they say what is the amount?
Yes. That is in the letter. They are proposing a 50-50 split with their total cost, dividing their total cost in half, and the county bearing half the cost.
And did they itemize what those costs were for what?
So, when we had the issues with Shawsville-Elliston, I had the opportunity to talk with some of the members over at Town Council for Christiansburg, and it was discussed that the county understood that there would have to be some payment done in order to make sure that that was taken care of. The point was pushed forward, and I think you did too, for the town, for the Christiansburg and Montgomery County, for the reimbursement, right?
Say that, ask me that again, I'm sorry.
So, for the reimbursement, because I had spoken with them before, I know you had gone to the town manager in reference to, they could come up with the, what the costs were to itemize it about seven or eight months ago, that the county would be willing to listen and see what that was going forward, correct?
Yes. I did, when he approached me several months ago, I did indicate that if he could provide a cost per call, that would be something that we could look at and evaluate, but I haven't received that.
Right. And then, in the letter that came forward, it was a rolling three-year average. So, part of the problem coming up is how nebulous the information is and how hard it is to kind of nail it down per call. And I think that's where we're at now, is to try to nail that down.
And how soft billing plays into that?
Right.
That's new, yeah.
Right. And if, if, you know, there was a bubble of expense because of what was going on down in the Shawsville-Elliston area last year, you know, that should be included in the rolling three-year, but did the bump in what we paid them kind of proportionally compensate them?
We haven't had enough of information to reasonably, reasonably evaluate that.
Thanks. That's just where I'm coming from. I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. And I'm going to turn over here and see if we have any Supervisor Biggs.
Okay. So the purpose of the meeting would be to discuss the charges or the information they sent to us about what they want us to pay them, but the problem I'm having is, it sounds like we don't have a way to analyze that. So, to help me understand, would we have information about that when we go to meet with them, or are we just going to discuss what they've asked for? Like, then, where did, I don't understand where they got the information from.
And I would, I agree with Supervisor Biggs. I would like, I think similar information provided to us, you know, if, are the numbers coming from the 911 Authority? Are they coming from, you know, where is this information coming from? And can we possibly agree where it should come from?
And then if there's a discrepancy, and we need to provide more funding, then I'm okay with that, but I just need to understand, you know, how they're evaluating their ask and how we would be evaluating, like, I don't understand how all that fits together without us knowing more.
Our staff could certainly work with their staff and determine where the, both the call volume and the cost came from, and make sure that we're accounting for soft billing, and sometimes we respond in the town and that type of thing, and vet the. And vet the information. It will take us a little while. I don't have an estimate of time for how long that will take before we have the meeting, if that's what you choose. I do know that they have just reiterated that they want to have the meeting sooner than later.
Well, if we have the meeting and we don't have the information, then it would basically be looking at their ask in this letter and having them discuss it, but we.
It would be hard to discuss from our perspective if we don't know where they, where their numbers came from.
Yeah.
That's right.
Okay. Thank you.
Supervisor Grafsky.
Well, and then my comment is, you know, we pay Blacksburg also annually for certain, right? Because they cover a lot of yours, mine, Supervisor Bone, your districts. And so I'd, I'd be interested to know kind of how those payments, when you break it down and, and compare it with the call volume.
Right.
Stack up against.
Right. What their costs are and so forth.
Well, and, and not even necessarily their, their costs, because they're not coming to us asking. But, you know, for us, the number of calls that they cover for the unincorporated parts of Blacksburg really are compared to how much we're giving them.
Right.
In, in, you know, reimbursement or stipend, whatever you want to call it. And, you know, what that breaks down to on a per-call basis.
Right.
I think it's logical to assume if we analyze this with the town of Christiansburg, then the town of Blacksburg will ask the same. And so I think being prepared for that.
The manager has asked that we look at it all together, which it does make sense to do that.
And that sounds like what the RFP is hoping to accomplish. Supervisor, Vice Chair Fajkowski, did you have any specific things to add?
No, I don't have to. You all covered everything. But getting all our statistics and data from the same place and both parties agreeing to that, I think is extremely critical. And also including the soft billing for the EMS side. And, and I'm wondering, okay, well, what about mutual aid calls? I mean, we are, all our departments are constantly cross, crisscrossing the county. Christiansburg backs up Blacksburg. Elliston backs up Christiansburg. I mean, we're just all over the place. So I don't, I don't know how you're going to kind of keep track of all that too. But everything needs to be considered. And certainly, we need to find a fairer way to evaluate the cost of each call so that we have a basis to go by. Because the way it is now, it's just, I don't know, throwing it up against the wall, seeing if it sticks, so.
Why not?
Do you think there's value in having some kind of discussion about agreeing on the call data to use?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Yes. That, that would, that would help.
Yeah. We, we need to all be looking at the same data to start. And I'll add, I, my understanding is the goal of the RFP, I understand why Christiansburg has submitted this letter to us because they're feeling it right now. And so obviously, they're going to make this request. But the goal of the RFP is to do a system-wide evaluation to ensure that there is some sort of consistency and equity across all of the career, volunteer, hybrid models. And so while I do want to meet with the town of Christiansburg and discuss their request, I don't know that we can really do anything with that request until we have a, a system-wide study. It's kind of like, you know, looking at water studies, for example. It's hard to, we're putting Band-Aids on problems if we're not evaluating the whole entire system. And so that's just kind of where my mind starts, is the information we're requesting from staff to prepare for us before we meet with Christiansburg is the same or similar information to what we need to get from the RFP system-wide. We're just asking, can we look at a little bit of just this one specific part of the greater system?
That's correct. And the study might show that the response areas need to be realigned. And if that were the case, then the cost would definitely shift.
Mm-hmm. Supervisor Bone.
Is it, am I understanding their fifty-fifty proposal correctly to assume that fifty percent of their calls and expenses are outside of Christiansburg proper?
That's a question we have. I don't know that, the letter doesn't explain, you know, what the methodology was behind what fifty-fifty is. You know, it, do you take it at the surface of, we have a cost, so let's split it in half? Or is there some other methodology that's just not communicated in the letter?
So, so my second question is, personally, I thought we just reimbursed Blacksburg and Christiansburg if we, you know, I didn't know that maybe we were short, you know? I knew all the, what, what Steve said of.
Mutual aid.
Mutual aid, yes, thank you. But my sense was that it was all about the same. On a rolling three years makes sense, you know? So the formula probably made sense. But it sounds like there's a fair amount of discrepancy from Christiansburg perspective that it's a lot more than all the mutual aid kind of compensating for each other.
As Chris said earlier, there's never been a formula.
Yeah.
I can't remember what year the Fire and Rescue Task Force was initiated. Do you remember that?
It was, it would have had to have been, I think it came up around originally two thousand.
I think that's right. It's been since I've been here.
It was a long time. Chuck Shorter brought it up when he was on the board.
When that, when that commission, first it was a task force, then it became a commission. When that was formed, one of the reasons that we formed that was so that they could help evaluate what the needs were and how the funding should be allocated. But it was based on what the county had previously provided, which was just, there wasn't a formula. It was based on how many, what was asked for and the support that the people gave for the request.
And so was the goal for this money on this chart to pay for all of it? Or just to only pay for part of it?
That's the request that they made last year. We fully funded, funded the request. I did enough analysis of my own to know that that was a fair amount to provide. I don't know if we should provide more or not.
But originally, was that kind of the idea? Was this part of our budget was supposed to fairly compensate the other, you know, the towns?
I'd say that could have been the original idea twenty-five years ago. But we've, we're twenty-five years down the road. And clearly, we have a request from the town of Christiansburg that says that at least in, you know, in their town, it's not fair any longer. And I think the goal of the RFP, the whole system-wide study, is to answer your exact question.
Right.
Which, maybe I'm hearing it's not, it's not fair now, but we don't know how to fix it until we study it.
We don't know if it's.
And we don't know if it's fair. I guess that's better.
We don't know if it's fair.
Supervisor King.
Well, reading this letter, we were seeing, it says calls outside of town limit, approximately twenty-five percent of total calls handled by Christiansburg. So are they saying they handle twenty-five percent of them?
It appears that that's what it says. And I don't know why, I've not asked anyone at this point the transition from twenty-five to fifty percent. So I don't know if I understand that fully.
I mean, that's what it says, is like twenty-five percent of outside-town limits is handled by Christiansburg.
I feel like we, that could be a point of clarity for a joint meeting with the Christiansburg Town Council.
And I know they're asking for operate, but are they including, I know some of them say, you know, we don't pay enough. We don't pay enough. But are they including the equipment, the trucks and everything? I mean, Chief Hanks just showed one truck is one and a half million dollars.
From reading the letter, it looks like they're only asking for operating and not equipment.
No, that's what I'm saying. We need to just make sure we do include that.
Yeah. Okay. Has that given, Chris and Angie, do you have enough direction to kind of get the ball rolling on setting up a meeting? I know we haven't said these dates will work.
Do we know?
I know that they meet on Tuesday nights and we meet on Monday nights.
And sometimes they meet on Wednesdays. They, sometimes they meet on Wednesdays. Do you want us to analyze the data and evaluate the cost before the meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Why don't we do that and then we'll get back, we'll let you know when we're close? Because I don't know how long it'll take to do that.
Okay.
Okay.
That sounds good. All right. So let's move to our next item in work session, and that is fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six budget. Back to you, Ms. Hill.
Okay. Mark and I are going to do this portion of the presentation in just a second. Can you advance one slide, Jen? I'm sorry. I only have one slide, so I don't have the clicker. This slide just reviews once again it, the budget that I recommended to the board on March the tenth through to the advertised budget. It includes the additional funding that we estimate will be received for state, state funding for schools and also the one-cent advertised tax rate increase for the total advertised budget. And I just wanted to remind everyone, if, if a tax rate is approved, there will be, that will generate unbudgeted one-time funds from the June fifth tax collection. And at the current rate, that would be about six, just a little over six hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. The board, as you know, is scheduled to approve the tax rate and budget a week from tonight. And if the tax rate is increased, we would need, staff would need direction as to where you want that funding to go. If you want it to go to the schools or if you want a portion of that to go toward the county, we just need to know that direction Monday so that we can approve the budget appropriately. And on the next slides, Mark's going to review some one-time funding requests that are related to and referenced in the fiscal year twenty-six proposed budget. There are also a couple of things that we're going to bring up that are not in the budget that might be one-time items that have arisen since the budget was presented. And to remind you, for the one-time items that we're going to discuss, when Mark presented in February the revenue estimates, he estimated three-point-three million dollars in revenue projected over the budget estimates for the current fiscal year. So there is a source of funding for those one-time requests.
All right. I'm going to talk to you a little bit about the one-time funding requests. Before I go into the details on this particular slide, I, I want to give you a little background information. So during the fiscal year twenty-six budget process, county divisions made several one-time funding requests. These particular one-time funding requests were specifically not included in the twenty-six budget because they could be funded with one-time-only monies. And this decision reduced the overall cost of the budget and it lowered the impact on the tax rate for fiscal year twenty-six. So to address these requests and appropriation, we'll be brought to the board in July to fund the specific requests out of one-time-only money. The one-time funding requests were reviewed and vetted through the regular budget process along with the recurring addenda request. Some of the requests are standalone requests, which means that there are no recurring dollars associated with the item. So they are truly one-time in nature. And then others have a one-time funding component and then recurring dollars that are associated with that one-time funding request. And those dollars are already included in the fiscal year twenty-six budget. So I'm going to go through this list here and talk about the individual items. So in county administration and public relations and community engagement, we had seventy-five thousand dollars in one-time funding to, to hold an event to celebrate the county's two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary. There is no recurring dollars associated with that request. In information technology, there is two-hundred-and-ninety-three thousand, eight-hundred dollars for software and maintenance items. Two-hundred-and-fifty thousand is to replace the current land management software, which no longer meets the needs of the county or its citizens. The new software will provide an online citizen portal and allow for better processes and project management. And then there's forty-three thousand, eight-hundred dollars in, in one-time items to support software maintenance and contracts for the county's new resident access portal and cybersecurity. And also Laserfish. There's sixty-six thousand, one-hundred-and-seventy-six dollars in recurring monies already in the proposed budget to support those one-time calls. In Fire and Rescue, there is seventy-one thousand, three-hundred-and-fifty for volunteer agencies as one-time items. And then there's sixty-five thousand, oh, fifty-two that was included in the budget for recurring operating needs. I'm going to go through the list of what that seventy-one thousand, three-hundred-and-fifty dollars includes. It includes ten thousand, five hundred for Long Shot McCoy Rescue Squad, and that was for pharmacy items. Nineteen thousand, one-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars for the Run and Rescue Squad, which was for a full functioning mannequin. And then fifty thousand for the new special operation team. Now, when you add those numbers that I just stated up, and they are included in the appendix at the end of this presentation, that actually totals seventy-nine thousand, six-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars. However, the Fire and Rescue Commission has eight thousand, three-hundred-and-forty-five dollars in unallocated base funds that can be used to offset that cost, that reduce that cost down to seventy-one, three-fifty. For Fire and EMS, there's three-hundred-and-twenty-three thousand, four-hundred for replacement of outdated hoses, nozzles for the two engines and for one-time items for twelve new positions, including the turnout gear, helmets, gloves, boots, gears and other equipment. Two-hundred-and-six thousand, one-hundred-and-seventy-six dollars and is included for the purchase of Lucas devices, which are for cardio pulmonary resuscitation. Two-hundred thousand to purchase two replacement response vehicles, one for the Fire and EMS chief and one for the deputy chief of training. Eighteen thousand dollars to purchase two mobile radios for the new ambulance that is expected to arrive in fiscal year twenty-six. And then fifty thousand to purchase uniforms to be used for formal events to include funeral services, honor guard functions and other ceremonies. There's twenty-eight thousand, six-hundred-and-twenty-five in recurring funds for the cost of uniforms for, and equipment for the twelve new positions, and that's an ongoing commitment. And then finally, we have a hundred-and-thirteen thousand in general services for the purchase of two vehicles, one for code enforcement and one to replace an IT work van that is used by the library's IT staff to travel among the branches. So total costs are just slightly over one-point-three, almost one-point-four million in one-time funding. And again, we have a hundred-and-fifty-nine thousand, eight-hundred-and-fifty-three dollars in the current proposed budget as an ongoing commitment to support those items. Again, one-time costs, just under one-point-four million. There's some additional one-time costs that are currently being considered or under review. The Fire and Rescue equipment for volunteer Fire and Rescue agencies and volunteer incentives. And then for, in the constitutional officers, there is a request for courtroom recording equipment upgrades in the clerk of the circuit court's office.
And I asked Mark to put this slide together, but the volunteer incentives would not be one-time. They're an item that we have discussed with you and plan to bring back to you in the future after we work with the Fire and Rescue Commission a little bit more to get through that and make sure that it's something that they want to have, an incentive that would be attractive to them. But that wouldn't be a one-time item.
Again, as I stated earlier, requests will, to appropriate the one-time items will be made in July. That's all I have. And if you have any questions, I'll be glad to try and answer them.
This presentation will be in board docs, and it does have an appendix with it that Mark gave some description. that Mark gave some description about the one-time items from that appendix.
Okay. Great. Does anybody have any questions for Mark or Angie about any of the new information presented? Um, I'm actually gonna start over here because y'all have been getting favored. Look, I'm, I don't know. That's why I'm starting over here.
Yeah, that's true.
All right. So do we have any questions from over here? Supervisor Grafsky?
I guess my, well, right now, my only question is, so the two response vehicles that are requested for fire and EMS, how or why do those fall out of maybe kind of the scope or the purview of the fire and rescue committee and the capital?
They're for career staff. That's why they're not in that allocation.
I thought that might be the case, but I wanted to make sure.
And I, I think we know the dates of those vehicles. Do you have the dates? I think one of the vehicles is a 2001 first response vehicle. So it's 23 years old. And the other one is significantly past its life as well, I believe.
Uh, 2010 Chevy Tahoe. So it's 15 years old. All right, thanks.
Any questions, Supervisor Biggs?
I don't have any questions at this point. Thank you.
All right, coming over here. I'm gonna start with Supervisor King because you were.
On them response vehicles, we just heard Chief Hank say a response vehicle, Tahoe truck, whatever, 80,000. Why is there 200,000?
I wondered that when he said that too. We're gonna find out.
It should be down to 160,000.
That's right. We'll look into that and make sure there's not equipment that was attached to the truck that I'm not aware of.
Well, if it's, I mean, if Fire and Rescue Commission can do it, so can the pave staff.
That's right.
With decals before it hits the road.
I understand.
Thank you.
Supervisor Kit?
So what I understand from Chief Hank's, he said that was 80,000. And then there was a price of equipment above and beyond. So that's why they had a cushion in that capitals. Yeah, but it was still whatever equipment they have to put in the radios than anything else that has to be put in above and beyond. That's the way I understood it. That's why I didn't, when I said 80 and then it said 100, I was like, okay. I'm the same way y'all are, but I was like trying to think of when he said they had to add equipment, they had to add this and that. So I'd be interested to see where that's at too.
Supervisor Ben?
So this 1.35 is coming out of the 3.3 that you said?
Yes, it could.
Yeah, that's all. Thanks.
Vice Chair Fidzikowski, any questions?
Uh, yeah. Where do you find that appendix?
You don't have it with you now, but you'll have it in board docs.
All right. Yeah, I don't have any questions.
Okay. And I don't have any questions either. Thank you so much for getting this information together for us. And sorry to interrupt you. Is, is there a motion to come out of work session?
Motion. Second.
I had a question though about, about budget. So on Sunday, Laura Purcell and I had like a little, a very small community meeting. And one of the questions came up from one of the speakers that had come to our meeting. And the question was, she was really feeling empathy for folks that were having issues paying their real estate property taxes. And what she wanted for clarification, and we've already said this publicly, but she thought it would be good to say it publicly again. Like, what are the guidelines for applying to get a tax, tax relief? What are the guidelines in our county? And how do we advertise these guidelines? Like, do we put it in the libraries? Do we put it online? Do we put it on our tax tickets, that kind of thing? And she thought if we said it publicly at a meeting, it would, maybe people would hear that. And she was concerned about that. So I told her I would bring that up. And then, and then she could sort of put that out there. And the other question she asked was, and I was sort of looking at Marty for this, like, when we, when we pass our ordinance to do that, are we limited in any, in any way about how much we can give for tax relief or not? So there you go.
Okay. We currently do include information about that with the tax ticket. I also plan to see if we can put that information on our sign. There's a time period that that has to be applied for. And it applies for people who are 65 years old or older and permanently or totally disabled. I can answer the code question. The code does not currently limit the amount. We adjusted that amount in 2024 and 2025. We do that and we bring you information in August. And then you pass that in October of each of those years. And it's graduated based on income and financial net worth.
And can we repeat like what the guidelines are? Like the income and the?
Currently, um, the income limit to receive 40% relief is between $56,000 a year and $70,000 a year. $45,000 to $56,000 a year receives 60% relief and zero income to $45,000 a year is 100% relief.
Okay. And is there a net worth value?
$205,000. And their person's house does not, is not included in the net worth calculation? Is that correct?
The residence, right. Primary residence, right.
Okay. Because she was, she was hopeful that maybe folks that didn't know about this would have, you know, a way to take advantage of it. And I think the other thing she sort of wanted us to think about is like, is that what we normally want to do? Do we ever in the future want to increase that? So.
I plan to bring that back to you in August of every year that I'm here.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And also Mary, not just the home, but also up to one acre or two. So if they have more than one acre, they can't count.
Thank you.
Supervisor Ben?
I liked how one speaker related it to something as it related to social security with a net worth of half a million dollars. I don't know what that was about, but by any chance, do you know what they were referring to?
No, I'll have to research that.
If you would, I would like to know that.
We raised the income limits to be the same percentage increase as social security goes up. So we'll look into that.
Thank you.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second to come out of work session. Any more discussion? Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Grafsky?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Chair de Mots?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Okay, next we have our consent agenda. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, if you will call the roll, please.
Mr. Grafsky?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Chair de Mots?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Moving on to new business, our first item of new business this evening is the special use permit for the short-term tourist rental.
So moved.
Okay. Located at 1480 and 1482 Clay Street. We did not have any public speakers on this com, on this application. I hear a motion from Supervisor Bone.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Grafsky?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Chair de Mots?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Next item of new business is the rezoning on Carriage Road, by Carriage Road LLC located in Reiner. This was our second public hearing this evening. We also did not have any public comments. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Ms. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Grafsky?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Chair de Mots?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Third item on new business is the amendment to the 2025 Montgomery Comprehensive Plan for Fathering Gate LLC. This was our third public hearing this evening and we had several public comments. In the past, that has caused us to consider delaying so we can evaluate all of the information that we've gotten. Is there a motion or Vice Chair Fidzikowski?
Chair de Mots, yeah, that is pretty much how we, we do it. For this first hearing, that we usually pass that on to the next regular meeting. And I would make the motion that we pass it on to the next regular meeting.
And I would second that.
Okay. It has been properly motioned and seconded to delay the vote or delay action on this item?
Sorry. The motion's just, the action's just to place it on the next agenda for discussion and possible action.
Okay. So is there any discussion about the motion? Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please. And this is a vote to discuss this at our next meeting.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Grafsky?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Chair de Mots?
Aye.
Seven ayes to move to the next meeting.
It's being, just to be clear, that it's being moved to the next regular scheduled meeting, which is the 28th, not Monday's special meeting.
Thank you. That's good clarity. So Monday, April 28th, 7:15 is when that meeting begins that day.
Thanks, Chris.
Um, next item on our agenda is National Public Service Recognition Week for the week of May 4th through 10th, 2025. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Mr. Grafsky?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Chair de Mots?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Final item of new business is National Police Week 2025, which is the week of May 11th through 17.
So moved.
Okay. And a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Grafsky?
Aye.
Chair de Mots?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Moving to reports. County attorney's report.
I have no report, Madam Chair, and I'm sure everyone's happy. Thanks.
County administrators' report.
I have a quick report. Um, I had the opportunity to tour the Teal Park with Supervisor King and Scott Woodram on Friday, and it's coming right along. Hopefully, we will have an update with a soft opening date for you in the very near future. April 24th, we will have a groundbreaking for the passenger rail station. You should have received an invitation for that. And I believe that our public relations committee and VA 250 will have the opportunity, opportunity there for you to preorder some of the commemorative license plates for your vehicles. The meeting on the 21st, which is a week from today, is scheduled for 6:30. We'll have public address and then action to approve a tax rate in the budget. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Board reports, Supervisor Bone.
I'd like to request a public hearing on not having a full PSA board. Is that possible?
Yeah, I mean, the board can agree to schedule a public hearing on anything if they want to get input, so.
Do people have any objection to that? Thanks. That's all.
Okay. And Supervisor Kits?
Just want to say, everybody slow down. We're getting more and more of the tickets through. So make sure you slow down in school zones. Funding the sheriff's department pretty well right now. Also, just a FYI for everybody, we are doing the groundbreaking on the 24th for the new rail station down in downtown Christiansburg on Cambria. It's a big moment for us to be able to get the train up here. So just, that's all I got.
Supervisor Grafsky?
I just want to share my appreciation with, with all the folks across the county that have reached out, you know, either in support or opposition to any number of things here recently. But, you know, particularly when they, they put a story or have a personal attachment to that issue and, and learning more about that and being able to connect with them on that level. It's just been, I don't know, it's, it's been an experience. And I appreciate people being vulnerable in these moments to, to share their stories, like I said, on, on either side of, of the issue. So thank you all and keep them coming.
Supervisor Biggs?
I agree with that. I, I think I mentioned particularly in the budget, how the emails were very personalized and meant a lot. And thank all the people that, you know, came out about the comprehensive plan amendment too and all the emails. And I wanted to thank Angie and Jen Harris for helping me get the word out to the Kiwanis Club last Thursday. And I got the word out about the 250th anniversary. They were very interested in that.